Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, WCSOH.org. Click on our district link, then select Board of Education, then Board Docs and Agenda, and select this evening's meeting. There will be one opportunity to address the board this evening. Agenda item 3.01. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bird?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. That brings us to Agenda Item 3.01, Public Comments. And since I just went over the rules, I won't go over those rules again. But we have one person to speak, and that is Ms. Peg Duffy.
I couldn't disappoint you and not be here tonight. Thank you for making tonight's report available prior to the meeting. That rarely happens. That's appreciated. From the limited conversations with other participants in the strategic planning sessions, I conclude that tonight's information is more aligned to what those community members were expected rather than the brainstorming that we endured. Really wish we'd had this report then. But to the report, and since obviously this is the only agenda item, the citations to which I refer are how the numbers come up on a PDF version, so if you try to follow that, they won't be the same numbers for you. On page five, Facilities Assessment in 2001 Done by an Outside Group. Have we played ostrich for the last 16 years and ignored renovation recommendations? We've been able to introduce or expand programs that required significant capital outlay, yet we have delayed critical building needs. Incidentally, I'd like to know what the source is used for recommending, what the basis of the source, for the source who recommends the 66 percent threshold to replace rather than renovate. Note, I'm not asking who the source is. I'm asking for their rationale for using the 66 percent figure. Page 16, as well as the board's enabling resolution, will no doubt provide us with recommendations. But we need to be able to make a comparison between specifics, between the needs we identify and the needs recommended by the Ohio School Facilities Commission. Surely, we know what critical infrastructure needs, need to be addressed. Why don't we tackle them right now? Page 18 gives examples of benefits to students from renovations. But what were the 2001 recommendations? What has been done in addition to or aside from the Page 18 projects? What from those 2001 recommendations has remained in limbo, unaddressed for the last decade and a half? Page 16 puts forth the possible option to expand capacity in the southern part of the district. How about expanding capacity in existing buildings, particularly at the middle schools throughout the district before building another one? Another concern, and this is as I understand it, when a tax abatement comes on top of a TIF, schools receive about 50 percent of anticipated revenue. Have we given any thought to renegotiating some of those? Finally, the most recent this week column by the superintendent in talking about facilities assessments says, and I quote, "Preliminary findings from our recent community's strategic planning meetings indicate that the condition of our facilities is a concern for many people. We must continue to involve residents in this conversation because where we go from here ultimately will be up to our community." Sounds like there could just be a bond issue over the horizon. First, let's see what possibilities there are to address current needs within the existing financial structure.
Sorry, I was making a note on the last piece that you were addressing. Thank you, Ms. Duffy. I appreciate that. Moving on to Agenda Item 4.01, since this is a special meeting discussion, I would like to have a motion to suspend Robert's Rules of Order so that we may move into Agenda Item 5.01. So a motion and a second to suspend Robert's Rules of Order.
So moved.
A second. And a second. Thank you very much. Mr. Griffith, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes. Robert has been suspended. We now move into Agenda Item 5.01, Facilities Planning. I believe, Dr. Kellogg, we are going to start off over here.
Thank you, President Velardo, members of the board. We prepared a presentation this evening that we're going to walk through. We've also invited some of our staff here to provide some comment as we go along as well. So this is intended to be work sessions, so as we go, if you have a question, something you want to dive into, let's not wait till the end. Let's just wrestle with it as it comes and hopefully so clarify some of the issues. So I'm going to do a brief piece, kind of an overview, which I think addresses some of what Mrs. Duffy was referring to in terms of what happened since 2001. I think some of those questions will get answered. So if we could go to the next slide? I don't have the clicker. You're in charge, Mr. LaRose. You're driving. So as a starting point in kind of the history of capital improvement funding, we went back to 2001. Why did we pick 2001? Not an arbitrary point, but it marks a significant change in facilities for the district. And from that point forward to where we are, some significant changes. In '01, this was the year that the community approved a $99.5 million bond issue for construction projects in the district. At that time, one of the significant contributors to the conversation, as I understand it, had to do with enrollment growth. So you had facilities capacity around enrollment growths in front of you that we don't necessarily have at the same level today or haven't had in the last couple of years. That's been a good thing for us. So at that time, the $99.5 million bond issue was done, and that money was used to add three new buildings, Central, Faus, and Alcott. And you'll notice that difference when you look at the 2001 OFCC, which was at that time OSFC, assessments. Those buildings were not in that because that was done prior to this. So 2001, $99.5 million bond issue brings three new buildings. Several other buildings, 10 of them had additions for enrollment growth, program growth, some air conditioning in many of her buildings, life safety systems, fire suppression, et cetera, that were added in several buildings. And then some funds were used for other building components beyond that. All right? And Jeff will have more on that. He's done that one before. He'll can give you some more detail about that as we move along. So that was in 2001. So outside the $99.5 million, which was that building project, additional funding for capital improvements came from a capital improvement levy. This was a levy, as I understand it, that was on a regular cycle. I believe it was a five-year cycle, is my understanding, that every five years we put in front of the community and asked for renewal of that five years. And so that's where the bulk of the capital improvement dollars are coming from during that time period. Next slide. Thank you. In May of 2009, the district, as that capital improvement levy expired, the district put it back on as a permanent improvement, is my understanding of history. And so that goes on the ballot, gets approved as permanent, which means now the district has an ongoing permanent capital improvement revenue source. It doesn't have to go back to the voters all the time. The revenue collected from that has fluctuated somewhere between $8.8 million to $9.1 million as a solid number, depending on the collections. So that was put in place. In 2010, the significant part of the history was that board, at that time, used the permanent improvement dollars to secure what's called a TAN. This is a tax anticipation notice. This is loosely, well, not loosely, it's really a loan, and knowing that you can secure the payment on the loan because you have this permanent improvement dollars coming in. You know, they know you can make the payment. Okay? So that tax anticipation notice was for $25 million. That $25 million was allocated over the next five years of the capital improvement plan from FY 11 through FY 15, which essentially, rough math, gave you an additional somewhere close to $5 million, roughly. There's other costs that are gone out of there and top of that. Yeah?
Just real quick, Bart, can you just briefly talk about the structure of this TANs? Because as I'm doing the numbers and years in my head, it seems a little odd. Did we get a one-time strike of $25 million? We're paying $2.5 million for 10 years? Or how does that one work?
The structure was different. It was a tax anticipation note. It was basically over the next 10 years, which is all a tax anticipation note can be used for. They max that at 10 years. But even currently, the payments fluctuate anywhere between $2, currently it's almost $3 million. It was just fluctuated based on how it was sold. It's a non-callable, so there's no, you're not going to be able to say, well, why don't we pay this off now and borrow more? You can't. It's a non-callable tax anticipation note that was structured for 10 years, which, on the slide there, it's this December of 2020, it's paid off. The current, that current loan is paid off.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is that did that yield in January, in school year 2010, 2011, did that yield a one-time strike of $25 million?
Yes. They got the, right. It's my understanding they got the money upfront, or else it was structured, I think they sort of banked it and used it over the next $5 million, over the next five years, each year for the next five years.
Interesting. All right. Thank you.
Great question. I appreciate that. Any other questions regarding that component? In spring of 2014, we made a change in how we're using our permanent improvement dollars. So the $2.5 million loan payment comes out of the permanent improvement. So you take that 8.8 minus the payment, tells you what you got. In order to provide additional funding for capital improvements, we backed out roughly $3 million that we typically used permanent improvement dollars for. That would be those kinds of instruction materials, textbooks, that would qualify under capital, and those technologies which would qualify under capital. We moved those out to the general fund in anticipation of the $25 million having been used over the next five years. And so the bulk of that over the last two years, that $3 million shift back, was used to fund the Point View project. Right? That comes off the books, and that now, as Jeff will walk through tonight, he'll go back over his funding over the next five years to fund the capital improvement project. So the lineage from '01, bond issue, some of that money was used for infrastructure that were part of the OFCC assessment at that time, but not the bulk of it, and I think Jeff's going to hit on that tonight. Capital improvement levy becomes a permanent improvement levy. Permanent improvement levies use to secure the tax anticipation notice. And since that, the next big change was pulling the technology and curriculum materials out of the permanent improvement dollars in order to make more room. Now, of course, you're just moving from one bank account to the another. It's not a savings, it's just a shifting where it is. And that has given Jeff and his department a little bit more to work from. So if I missed a finer point of the history, I apologize. I went through a lot of documents, talked to a lot of people internally, tried to get a good understanding of it. I think I've got it pretty good, accurate. If there's a correction to that, I apologize. I certainly can make that, but I think that gives you a good crosscut of since '01 and funding we've used. The other thing that we did provide the board was a large document. It was really all that you have access to the last 10 years worth of, I'll call them punch list items from the capital improvement that shows by building what things we have done to address facilities over that time. So it's not a one-and-done, it's an ongoing piece. And I know you know from Jeff's presentations, roughly every winter, where he goes over that. We're in the process of doing that now. So questions for me or additional clarifications on this side, on the history? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. LaRose.
Thank you. So many of these slides you've seen before. This is just a review of the 2001 facility assessment by the OSFC. You can see on this first slide, the 66 percent rule is a recommendation from the OSFC that at, when the renovation cost exceeds the cost for replacement, that a district should consider looking at replacement. So from 2001, the yellow bar is 66 percent. Everything above that is what they had recommended that the district consider as possibly replacing. They also look at a model that serious consideration be given to replace buildings that are 50 years old. And what I've highlighted in red, the age of the, at the time of the assessment, Hanby 79, Emerson 105, you can see that that 50-year range is when those renovation costs start to exceed the replacement cost. For example, Hanby at 131, Emerson at 124. And so what I've flagged on the far right are, our buildings are now 16 years older, so you can see some additional ones that fall into that 50-year category.
Hey, Jeff?
Yes?
If I could, to Peg's question, did the, has the OSFC ever disclosed the mathematics behind their rationale for the 66 percent? Is it based on capex-opex swing? Is it based on any form of economics that they disclose or?
I have personally not worked with the OSFC since I've been here. I did reach out to them a few weeks ago, and they did confirm that we're going to meet next Wednesday, based on some of the work that they have upcoming with us, based on the board's passing of a resolution. So I will, I will get more information at that time.
I've been concerned, and Jeff, this is nothing new for you to hear from me.
Sure.
Since '01, you've heard this from me several times. It seems to me, and you can check on your Wednesday meeting if that would be helpful to anybody, the analysis of the facilities skews heavily toward age. The analysis of the systems, the analysis of everything that they look at, has a basic foundation of looking at the age as a primary component. So that then immediately says that because they're looking at age as a primary determinant, then age is going to skew everything toward a renovation or a replacement piece. Because age, just based on the age of our facilities, is going to carry more weight, so more buildings are going to be said to be over whatever the 66 percent reasoning is, so we automatically skew heavily toward a replacement kind of piece. I'll just be really blunt, I've not changed my mind in all those times, all those years. I think that methodology is a bit ham-handed. I think it's too strongly focused on age. And I, for one, would be hard-pressed to walk into our facilities and say, replace the sucker. I just don't see that. And given those numbers, that's what it would suggest. So I'm just putting that out there. Haven't changed my mind on that at all. So if you want to talk to the Facilities Commission about why they skew everything so heavily toward age, and any of the information that leads them to their 66 percent rule, I would be interested in knowing that, because I think there is a great deal more to be concerned with than age.
Well, I want to piggyback on that because I've never understood, and I've gone through tons of the materials, Jeff, that you've provided me over the last couple of years, done my own research with where OSFC is. I am confused why this organization continues to use the term renovate when it's not the correct term, right? The correct term is reconfigure, right? And there's a big difference because I can renovate a building, right? I can make the bathrooms nicer, right? I can attach, you know, a new HVAC to it. But if the basis for renovation is an age metric, then we really, and I'm saying this tongue-in-cheek, I guess we really messed up with Point View. Right? Because based upon the way that OSFC classifies this, we should have torn it down and built a new one. We took what we had, we reconfigured it based upon teacher and student input, as well as community. We added to it, and we redid the interior shell. I don't see that as a renovation, right? Renovation, it would still be an open classroom setting based upon its original architecture. So I'd be very curious as to why they do not have as part of their methodology, reconfiguration based upon curriculum design, demographics, I mean, all these other characteristics that should be a part of their evaluation process, so.
I do believe that comes after, through the process, and I'm not sure we've ever been there with them before. It's my understanding that that initial process was just assessing the condition of the buildings based on age. So to your point, I think there's another layer there that starts to look at the needs from facilitating learning in terms of what, what changes would occur as, as a building is older. So I don't believe, and again, I wasn't here, I don't believe that it was looked at at that time. It was just age. Yeah.
It was just that, you know, the age thing, and unfortunately, once they have done the study and it's out there, then everyone assumes that that's what we're basing all of our decisions on. And that would not be accurate. Point View is an excellent example of that. And when we look at what we've done over the years and where we have spent dollars, and granted, we need to spend more dollars on some things, but as we've looked at where we've spent dollars and how we have progressed with facilities, it would look suspiciously as though we had underspent and let our facilities fall into ruin because we were not doing the renovations and replacements according to that study. So I think one of the things that we need to do going forward is identify how we even want to talk about our facility needs so that age isn't the predominant driver of everything we talk about.
This is just a breakdown, again, per the OSFC, based on, I've got this organized by cost. So the total from 2001 was just over $111 million. And the highest cost school identified was south at $22.2 million. So this is just showing you a breakdown by school of the total needs at that time.
Hey, Jeff, real quick. So this is, this is interesting. Let's pull on the thread with Point View real quick. So in 2001, the estimated OSFC renovation cost was $3.9 million.
Correct.
All right. So what was our total figure for that?
What?
For that project?
Yeah. It was $6 million. That includes furnishings, technology, and that includes the building addition.
Okay.
Yeah.
So 15 years later, we beat, I'm trying to pull it up right now to see what the rate of inflation, inflation in the dollar value was between 2001 and basically 2015. But I bet you it's more than $6 mil, right? So we, from an economics perspective, yeah.
About 15, based on, based on their cost per square foot for new, and based on a renovation cost that they've established for, in 2013. Now, with that being said, we were hesitant to present the 2013 information because a couple of things. They had not been back into the schools in 13 to look at the condition, nor did they have the information as to the improvements that we've made since 2001. So they have provided a value that's strictly an inflationary value, but it's...
And what was that value I just didn't hear? You said 50?
They took the numbers from 2001, I'm sorry, for...
You, you referenced a number for Point View.
I think it was around $15 million if you take their, their renovation that was updated. But again, that's a, because they hadn't looked at what we've done over the past 16 years, and they hadn't reviewed the condition, we don't feel that that's a good number.
Sure.
So hence why we made the recommendation that the board approved that they'll be back and to do an assessment where they're going to be talking with us to understand what work we have done over the past 16 years, and then actually walk through the buildings to look at the condition.
And do you have a date for that yet?
They said as early as July, so that's what the meeting is about next week, is to try to pin down a timeline as to when will they start and how long will that process take. They referenced two to three months to do a full-scale assessment, and then do their own forecast for enrollment, a tenure enrollment.
Okay. So just doing some quick, a quick inflation calculator. Do we have a notion of how much just the additional square footage appears and all of that cost us?
I do. I think it was about $15,000 square feet.
Mm-hmm. So would that net to, what, about $1.5 mil of that project? And here's the reason why I'm asking, is that the 39, there are 33.9 percent cumulative inflation rate between '01, 2015, so from finished.
So I may correct.
Yeah.
If you do the math, it's about, it's about $10 million.
Okay.
So with their cost per square foot for the new addition and then the, and then the renovation cost. But again, we don't know what the scope of work is that they had projected.
Yeah.
Versus what we actually did.
So I'm feeling pretty good about that, though, in general, right? Because not only did we renovate existing square footage, but we added $16,000, right, at a cost that was substantially below both their $01 dollar adjusted rate, as well as their follow-on rate in 2013. So again, I think that that makes me feel good because that means that we're making smart decisions with the community's money, as opposed to, you know, the back-of-napkin estimates that are being done by OSFC.
So this slide is, again, looking at the assessment of $111 million, and we previously looked at a breakdown by school. This is a breakdown by building component. The highest one, the $20 million at the top, again, ranked in order of cost, the non-construction cost is construction manager, design fees permitting, the bidding process, which I think that equates to about 20, 22 percent in this model. When you get into the actual building components, the highest cost in their assessment was general finishes at $19.2 million, HVAC at 15.4, and so on. So that's just a breakdown by, by building component. When we look at the construction bond that was passed shortly after this assessment, again, the assessment of $111 million, the construction bond was passed at $99.5 million. And this is a breakdown of the budget, where those dollars went. So obviously, a majority went for the construction of the new high school, $46.6, Alcott and Faus each $9.8 million, the 10 building additions that John referred to, $9.1 million. Equity modifications was converting Robert Frost and Mark Twain. They were open classroom environments, so with the bond, those were converted similar to what we did at Point View. We enclosed the classrooms. That was $2.3 million. The balance was towards existing infrastructure. So of the 99.5, $21.9 dedicated to existing infrastructure. So when we compare the, the 21.9 for existing infrastructure to the components that were identified in the assessment, for example, general finishes, they had $19.2 million in identified needs, and the bond, we spent about 1.6 to cover what was identified in the assessment. So what I have flagged there are the four areas where we need to do better. We've come a long way in, in many of those other categories. For example, HVAC, and most of those dollars, again, as John referred to, with that $21.9 million, went to air conditioning buildings that were not air-conditioned at the time, and adding fire suppression systems to buildings that didn't have it at that time, less South High School and Central College. So we still have two buildings that do not have a fire suppression system. But we have, I know when I came on board, the two areas that we hit immediately was improvements with HVAC and improvements with roofing. Hazardous materials, though this reflects zero from the bond every year. Every six months, we're looking at the conditions of hazardous materials and we're doing the abatement as necessary. We look at that every time we do construction to see what materials are being demoed, tested. And again, that's all done by, under the supervision of an environmental engineer and by a licensed abatement contractor. So most of those categories, we've come a long way. General finishes, not so much, which is, you know, the painting, the cosmetics. Electrical, not so much in the past. If the board, as a reminder, more recently, we had brought several resolutions to board and we're starting replacement of switchgear and panels in these older buildings. Loose furnishings, and I'll show you a little later on how much we've dedicated for loose furnishings. A long way to cover the deficit that's identified by the OSFC. And then plumbing is another one that, we need to figure this one out. So much of it is, you can't see it, it's underground. So, and this is a dangerous one, to run this way where you're running systems to failure. So we have had several cases where there's been a sanitary backup. We're trying to identify where and then we're having to dig in. Most recently, it was over the spring break where we cut into a hallway at Mark Twain to do repair of a sanitary line. But again, I will say, not so much with the bond where we've made headway, it's with the capital improvements that has supplemented a lot of the work that didn't happen as part of the bond. This is looking at the budget in those five-year increments dating back to 2001. So you can see what we're working with for infrastructure is that very first category, buildings. And then, you know, we have a category for custodial equipment, maintenance vehicles, technology, instructional materials, buses, furniture, there is a fee to collect the taxes. And then those last two columns is picking up the financing on the 25 million borrowed on the tenure tan. So when, going back to buildings, those early years, we did not have a lot to work with. Four buildings, that's 1.3 million. And as the board knows, I've routinely brought resolutions just for roofing in a period of a year that exceeded a million dollars. Did a little better in the next one, '06 through '10, where we picked up another million for buildings. You see the big bump at 7.14 in 1115. That's where that 5 million annually came in with the 25 million that was borrowed. And then we dropped back down in '16 through '20. And as part of the offset of not taking that 7 million clear down back to 2 is we had moved a significant, most of the technology moved to general funds, instructional materials moved to general funds. So it helped us beef up the building, the dollars for building annually in this current five-year plan. Now, as a comparison, these are just three sources that I've read about. The Council of Greater City Schools, that's large districts that's in the state of Ohio. Actually, that's nationally, so Cleveland, Columbus are all part of this. But they have a formula in terms of what they recommend for a capital budget. So it's easy to do the math where they have a cost per square foot and then we take our square footage. And the Council of Greater City Schools recommends an annual budget of 8.8 million. And that was from a report in October '14. The U.S. Green Building Council was another source that I found. Again, using their formula, it was about 11 million. And then going back to the OSFC based on life cycle, the recommendation is about 9 million per year for capital improvement needs. So turning to forecast, back in December, we reported, we were three years into the 10-year forecast. And we were sharing at that time that we are on a trajectory that our enrollment is coming down every year. So we had shared that we believe elementary, what was flagged in yellow is the highest enrollments over those years. So elementary was the high in FY '12, middle the high in '16. The highest enrollment, including the forecast, we believe was in 2017. But again, you see the changes in elementary, middle and high. See a lot of red, which is each year, it's coming down. But when we look at what actually happened in '16 and '17, '16 grew 167 students to the far right. FY '17, this past year, we grew 184. So we started looking, well, what's happening that we're outpacing the forecast? So there's a lot that's changed within the district from the time that forecast was run. Financially, we weren't nearly as sound as we are today. There's a lot more development that's happening that I've flagged in previous board meetings. So when we, and we just had this updated by the same company. And look at all these factors, this is the new forecast. So you can see that, all right, off to the far right, those changes in lieu of, see a lot of negative numbers, a lot of triple-digit growth each year. So over the course of the next 10 years, we believe with the updated forecast, we're going to grow 919 students, 450 of those in the first five years. So the new highs that we're looking at is elementary peaking in '24 and then middle and high school and total enrollment peaking in FY '27.
So Jeff, with the solidification of our boundaries through the final amendments to win-win, as we look at the enrollment forecast, we know that there are still parcels of land in Blendon Township that have not been developed. And had they been developed under the previous win-win approaches, would have gone out of our district, would have gone to Columbus. But with our boundaries being solidified, those tracts are in our district for good. So when the company uses its factors, does it also, does it have a factor that is put into play for vacant land or not? Because when those tracts are developed, it's likely that there will be additional kids coming out of those.
They do, yes.
Okay.
Just Nancy.
Yeah.
Just a point of clarification for people out there listening, because I had a phone call similar to what your question just was. Keep in mind that those, the school boundaries are solidified, but the city of Columbus boundaries, the city would move. So if you have a property that's being developed and you ask the city of Columbus for sewer and water, the city of Columbus boundaries, the city moves. The district maintains the same.
Right, yeah.
And that was a question that somebody asked if we could clarify. So I want to make sure, since you brought it up, to clarify that if somebody's listening, because you're right, the boundaries stay the same for the schools, but the city.
What the cities choose to do is their business, but I'm more concerned about where our boundaries are right now.
On enrollment projections, that's a great question, Dr. Nestor Baker. It's always important to read the methodology because depending on whose methodology you use, our numbers change. So for example, we get, our state dollars are driven by an enrollment number which doesn't align with these enrollment numbers. And so there's difference between doing live birth cohorts, all those other examples. So the entire document we got from Cropper gives their methodology and actually talks about difference between projections and forecasts in there. So you have, I think we gave you the whole document, if we didn't, we will. I would read that fine-tooth comb, so you know exactly what we're talking about because what you don't want to have, what can happen, is because this is a forecast, it can twist again, and then you try and understand those conditions. So the other thing I'd say is, whereas we go 919 students in 10 years, ooh, if you do the math, it's less than 1% growth per year. Got to spread that amongst all the grade levels, all the schools. So it is a large number, but it's spread out across multiple schools, multiple grad years over multiple. And so, and it's not, it's not Olentangy growth, it's a comfortable Westerville growth, I would like to call it.
And that's good for us.
Yes.
Because, you know, it keeps us, I had been concerned, starting in the late '90s, I was concerned about the downward trajectory that we were forecasting at that time. Because when a district starts to lose funds or lose students, that translates into fewer kids, fewer dollars, needing the same services. So you end up with a greater difficulty in being able to afford certain services. So the stability that we have, and as our forecasts are showing now, that actually is good for us economically and it's also good for us programmatically in a lot of ways. Yeah, there are problems that come with it, but it's much better to be in this gentle Westerville growth piece than in a decline.
The other piece on the finance side, if I can, Bart, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. We're capped.
True.
More kids we get translates into actual fewer dollars per student from the state.
But that's going to go away, right? No, I know it's not.
We're capped.
And this is where I feel, so, look, we've been talking about this. I've felt this since I joined the board, right? That the numbers were not, I know that the forecast had some age to it, but that the numbers were going the other direction, that they were going to the positive side of the ledger from a student growth standpoint. Here's my big concern in terms of the estimating methodologies and the fact that we're capped and that we have housing stock where if, in the 25% question, we start to see a shift of 1%, we start to see 450 to 600 additional students in the district. So if we see a population growth of students in rooftops today and we see that number go to 28%, we've got close to 2,000 more students. We see that go to 30%, and that's troubling to me because I don't know if we've got a grasp on that. But what I do know, talking to our real estate sales community, is nothing is staying on the market in Westerville. It is gone in days, right? And the question is, is it gone in days to young families with children and displacing people who are making retirement decisions or movement decisions and leaving the community? And if that's the case, we've got a hidden student growth equation that I don't know how we see.
That's a really good point, Richard. You know, as we see the neighborhoods turn over, so to speak, and as we look at where our schools are and where our schools are not, that's, it's always very telling for us to look at that. I don't know if we can, it is hidden. I don't know if we can do some survey work with our real estate community around what they're seeing as regards to families that are moving in, the people that are moving in and so forth, to give us at least a lens to look through as regards to that hidden question.
Yeah, I'm actually, that's actually why I thought the numbers would go the other direction when the estimate was redone, or the forecast, rather, was redone. Because I think that's happening. Anecdotally, I think that we're seeing rooftops change from people who have lived long-term and are making retirement decisions and are being replaced by young families.
It's not just in Westerville because we see it in the type of housing stock that is being created. Particularly, you know, Westerville's pretty much landlocked itself. But when we look outside Westerville and the housing that is still being created down in River Park, et cetera, and whatever happens in Blendon, those are likely to be rooftops with families. People want to be here.
I think a takeaway from that is that we need to talk with the real estate community.
Yeah, I think we do.
And I'm sure they'd be real receptive of the conversation, but I think we need to navigate that with them.
So this next slide is looking at the forecasted enrollment over the next 10 years as compared to current capacities. So down at the bottom is the capacity that we reported at the master plan update meeting in December. Total capacity, 15,960, broken down by preschool, elementary, middle and high school. And what's flagged in yellow is where the enrollment is exceeding capacity as it is today. And one of the call-outs from Bart Wallace in our executive meeting, she had asked, well, are you forecasting capacity? Because as we know, every time we convert a special, a typical classroom to a special ed classroom, well, you're driving your capacity down. So we have not done that, but it was just a highlight that she had shared with us.
Jeff, on the capacity piece, just a little more detail. So the way we're calculating capacity right now is, we have a classroom, the building report says this is a general classroom meeting. And then we use as a divisor 25 kids per class. Now, what we know is, in any given classroom, we don't just stick 25 kids in there and call it done. Sometimes we have class sections with 30, sometimes we have class sections with 19 and everything in between. So the divisor of 25, you can range that, there's other ways to look at that capacity. So when we see a building that says, well, it's at 98% capacity, 102% capacity, that number is based on a divisor of 25. And that is important to know. The other thing it doesn't take into account is classroom size. So 25 in some-sized classrooms is real fine, 25 in other classrooms is real cramped. And that's another limiting. So keep that in mind when you look at capacity because when we're really at fine-line marks between like 98 and 102%, you know, I'm not sure how far off we are. Apologize for my microphone, so I think that's an important piece there.
It is important. To put it bluntly, is that the best we can do as regards to figuring capacity? So if we're using basically a divisor of 25, can we not create a formula that allows us to plug in for the special ed population within certain buildings and the square footage classrooms within certain buildings so that we get a better sense of what our capacity actually is? Rather than a, you know, if I'm going to gripe about age as a ham-handed criteria, then this would also be a ham-handed criteria if we're just using a 25 divisor.
Yes, I guess it'd be a short answer. I'm not so sure that we don't know that as well. So we're not ignoring that other parts of the building are being used for other programs.
Oh, I know we don't, but this is what's out there.
What happens, and we're going to hear some more from some folks today, is what happens, and we had, we had these conversations all the time, particularly in relation to special ed, right, Curtie? All of a sudden, as we were talking about, was it this morning? It's been a long day. We talked about what's coming up from the preschool and the numbers of students, and what does that mean? And it's not just teacher piece, then it's where do we put the unit? And it goes back to capacity, who might have a classroom? And it becomes kind of like an all-call, who might have a classroom space that we could convert or take? Either because they have low enrollment to capacity and they have a room open or... So we're going to talk about that a little bit, too, yeah.
And again, I know you've seen this slide before. It's just a reminder that this is a snapshot of the student demographic profile back in 2001, the time of the assessment, the time of, right before the construction bond, and then what we look like today. So, you know, significant changes, obviously enrollment's up 16% from 2001. The minority enrollment from 18.3 to 42.6. Economically disadvantaged, 6.7 to 35.8. LEP is up 7.6%. Special needs, this has been more flatlined than the others, still up 3, but we range anywhere from 10 to 12% a year of our students are special need. And then the big one, the significant increase in square footage. So again, that assessment does not include this additional square footage that we have, which is significant from 2001. So next steps.
Come back up one sec. So on that square footage, Jeff, does that include buildings like this?
It does.
Transportation, so those wouldn't be part of any OFCC assessment, but they do add some spaces. And I know we're going to kind of get to next steps. Let's go ahead and do that one first, I'll do the other.
Sure. So again, per the resolution that the board approved referencing the OFCC, they will come in based on your approval and update, redo the assessment, I should say. And so that's targeted tentatively to start sometime in July, but again, I'm going to firm that up next week. And again, they're also going to provide us with their own 10-year enrollment forecast and we can compare that to what we have through Cropper. and we can compare that to what we have through Cropper. We've talked about feasibility studies, so what we're looking at is buildings 55 years and older. Feasibility options for the schools. And in reference to what Mrs. Duffy had shared, are, can we look at the size of a building as it is today? And what, what options are there for changes in this, in the size or capacity of a building based on the site? And then also looking at, at options now that we have property in the southern end of the district with Minerva Park, 15 acres. And knowing that there, the density of our population is on the southern end of the district, yet that's where we have our, the fewest capacity for schools. So looking at the Minerva Park property, and also in the, in the next slide, it shows this, which is the bottom left, school property, that bottom left, that green space there, which was the former golf course, that's the 15 acres that could serve as a potential site for a school. In addition to that, we also have Hawthorne sets on 29 acres. So what is east of Farview with that running track in that wooded area? That's, that's also an opportunity with, potential with, with what we could do in the southern end as well. So what we're, what we're going to be looking at is, is options for the southern end of the district for review. And then these are just some questions to kind of spark tonight's discussion. Just the perspective of the board, based on their knowledge of being in buildings, based on communication with, with community members. But what, what do we think is a, a good building renovation cycle? A replacement cycle? Is that age driven? Is it driven by needs from changes in, in the facilitation of learning? As an example, Point View, where we went to the open classroom to the enclosed classroom environment. Future space needs, based on enrollment growth, as we talked about. What, the current program limitations that we have, we referenced special ed, ESL being another one, gifted, 21st century teaching and learning, and can we have representatives from the, the curriculum department here to, to, to talk about their personal experiences and, and answer questions that you may have? The future curriculum opportunities. So we're, when we're looking at capacity against this forecasted enrollment, what should we be planning for if we are looking to expand programs such as all-day kindergarten or the magnet program or career tech? Perspectives on what's an ideal capacity for, for an elementary school? We range from 150 at Central College in Longfellow, both six classroom buildings, so six times 25, the 150. And then the other, the other, the top end of that spectrum is Faust and Alcott with a cap, capacity of 600. So is there a sweet spot for that ideal learning community at the elementary level? Same thing at the middle school level. We have Blendon at the lower end with seven, currently a capacity of 700. Genoa currently at 985. School building replacement versus relocation. So again, it's something to think about, do we automatically, if we're going to replace a building in a, in a, in a planning cycle, do we just automatically assume that it's going to be replaced on the same site? Or would we consider replacement at a, at an alternate location, if that makes sense, if we have land based on where, where the students are? Another thing that, to look at with the older buildings versus the newer, is the, the concerns more recently with safety and security. It's interesting enough that Genoa is, is a rather new building in the fleet, but when you look at that administrative space, it's right in the center of the building. And, and with newer models such as Central High School, you, you go into that airlock space where you, there's those double doors that keep you from going in, but there's that receptionist window there before you, before you can get all the way in. And then talking about a, a potential of a facilities committee of community members, of, of administrators, to, to review options that, that we would bring to the table.
So before we open up questions, a couple, a couple of thoughts. One, I want to circle back a little bit to some of the discussion about what was Ohio School Facilities Commission, OSFC, which today is OFCC, Ohio Facilities Construction Committee, and the 60%, 66% rule in the replace, don't replace in those pieces. So I think that, this is my own thinking, so I may be wrong. But the origin of Ohio Schools Facility Commission funding is embedded in school building inequalities across the state. And so it was Ohio's efforts to improve that. And if you understand how that works, a listing based on essentially poverty level of school districts and needs was created. And we were, as in Westerville, we were pretty far down the list comparable to many of the other school districts. In fact, pretty, pretty far, pretty far down the list. If we're in the 400s or 500s, right? So when you think about that origin and the funding, what they're trying to do, and you think about how the money was originally doled out in this 66%. Ohio was using taxpayer money to address inadequacies in school facilities and communities had the least, least opportunity to raise additional dollars to keep their buildings afloat. So why would you put a number at 66%? Because the probability that the community was going to be able to partially fix something and then 15 years later have to raise money to fix it again was very, very low. So wherever the 66% came from, part of that is a measure of, that community is probably not going to be able to get by long term with a partial fix. So at 66%, let's take it out, build a new one, and, and give them a newer building that has longer opportunity expansion. As they've moved down the list, the number of school districts needing that kind of support, like Westerville, diminishes. And there's a couple of changes in, in the practice as we dive into OFCC, we want to ask about. One would be segmented projects, which is relatively different than I think in 2001, where school districts didn't have to do everything on the list. They could determine which projects they want to do with OFCC money and which projects they didn't want to do. And on the replacement versus renovation number, as we talk to OFCC, although that number still kind of hangs out there, what we're hearing now more and more is, that's negotiable. In fact, some of the things they'll talk about is, a measure they use is historical significance of the building. So there is, there isn't the same level of handcuffness with it. And so I just want to put that in front as we think about OFCC. We were asking about the Point View project. So I went to the OFCC data that Jeff got, and in, in 2013, when 20, 2001, the Point View assessment was, for renovations, was about 3.9 million. In 2013, it was 4.1. In 2013, with inflation and alignment to the current OFCC manual, it was 6.4. Now, I don't know what the 6.4 called for, but that's about what we spent on Point View. Now, I don't know if that includes a footprint and all the other things we did. So the other thing I want to say is, and this is kind of in reference to what Mrs. Duffy said, the second we start talking OFCC, right, the common Ohio experience is, if you go OFCC, that means I'm putting a bond issue on the ballot. That's not, that's not the intent sitting here today. I, I want to be clear about that. I've said it before and don't misinterpret. It doesn't mean that that might not be down the future for this community. But as we sit here today, there's no preconceived agenda that because we're talking OFCC, we have a target date and amount of money that we're going to have to go to bond. I think the question is, what do we need to know that we don't know today? And what we, what we need to know is, we really need some rough cut of our current assessment costs. I say rough cut because as Dr. Nestor Baker said, and I agree, OFCC's rough cut is done on age of building. And what it doesn't do is, as Jeff would say, they don't go look at every boiler and every HVAC system and lift every ceiling tile. They don't do that. But if you watch many districts that do look at OFCC, and I think Dublin began with an OFCC assessment on their recent project that went to the voters, and then they had a deeper dive based on other, other factors that they wanted to look at. So that opportunity is there. So for the purpose of clarity, what does it mean for us to be in OFCC? Doesn't mean anything to us, other than there's some information there, and we have some previous information that we're trying to align that to. So, so those are some things as we move forward, I think, as we talk with OFCC, those are questions I think the board would want to answer about, what does it mean to be in that project? We need to understand that. In terms of this pieces here, I thought it might be helpful, I've invited people here, and since they took a Monday night off to come be here, I'd like to give them an opportunity to talk a little bit from their lens, if, if it's okay, if you prefer not to, to maybe take a few minutes each to talk a little bit about, on this question of, okay, here's our current facilities, from a capacity standpoint, what does it mean? What limitations do we see in our current facilities and programming today? So I thought I'd start with that. And maybe Vicki, Gerald, would you like to start a little bit, talk about gifted and what you see? Thanks.
Absolutely. Well, this is of course a broad view, but, thank you. This is of course a very broad view, but just to give you an overview of where we are as far as our gifted population is concerned, we currently, as of today, okay, plus one, we have 3,567 kids identified as gifted in our, our district. 725 are at the elementary level in K5. At the middle level, it's 1,284, and the high schools, another 1,558. Our programming is diverse. At the elementary level, we have both self-contained and we have our small group program, which involves clustering of students with likabilities with specific teachers that have had experience with professional development and working with gifted kids. In the middle school, they're served primarily through advanced coursework. The small group is something that is currently happening once every six days for 40 minutes, rather like a special. And in surveying my gifted intervention specialists that go out into the buildings, we work on a rotation. They'll have a set of three to four buildings each nine weeks, and so they'll move as they go. They don't often have a home or a set space at all. And if you're interested, I can, I can give you just this little handout that I prepared that just kind of gives you an idea of where they are. Some of the, some of the schools have a space for them that's fairly consistent. Some of the places, they meet in the bookroom, they meet in the hallway, they meet wherever there is a vacant classroom. So on any given day, when a teacher goes to the building to work with the gifted students and pull out, they have to be very creative and very flexible to find a spot for our kids to, to work. Is that, you know, an insurmountable thing? Of course not. But it would be nice if our kids felt like they had a space that was consistent for them to work in, in the elementary schools. So that's one concern. The other piece is our, our self-contained program, which currently houses two sections of third, two of fourth and two of fifth. And next year, going into fifth grade, we'll have a huge section of, I'm sorry, going into fourth grade, we'll have sections of 23 each. The cap for gifted, according to the state of Ohio, is actually 20 per classroom. So Ms. Gerald will be writing a waiver yet again to the state of Ohio to say, please allow us to have extra kids. So far, those have all been approved, so I anticipate that will be the case. Going into fifth grade, we'll also be over with 41 in each, or 21 in each section. I would ideally love to be under that cap, but we're always kind of having to make adjustments and to figure out as each group of tests, or students rather, come in with their test scores, because we have limited seating, what the cut score has to be for that year in order to fill the classes, but make room for kids that move in, and we'll test in with retesting. I don't have the data for the new group of third graders yet. It did come into the district today electronically. The fabulous Brandy Pullins promises me that I might have it as early as 10 o'clock tonight. So I'm going to be working on that tonight after we're done.
Let me just, let me just interrupt right there, if that's okay. Are you primarily over the cap?
Usually.
Due to space or due to?
Demand.
Teachers and FTEs?
We're over the cap because it's hard to estimate the number of children that will test into the program during the given year. I, I start with a set of test scores and we, we kind of ballpark it, to be honest with you. Last year, the cut score was 130. When we did retesting in the fall, like immediately in the fall, we had another, another eight kids qualify. And we've had three more since then that qualify either through testing with our school psychologist or testing with our GISs have been able to conduct. So it's, it's hard. And it's difficult to have those conversations with parents. Well, what do you mean, my child is identified as cognitively gifted and they meet the other criteria, but there's not a spot for them in self-contained? And that's about FTE. That's about building space as well, because currently, we're housed at Emerson, and they very graciously take care of us there. But we also live every day with the knowledge that as the desire and the need for more magnet sections comes, as they grow their program, then we will be homeless. It is very important that we keep this team together because of the work that we do across grade level and across subject area. So if you're looking long range and talking about building facilities that maybe on the new land or something like that, it'd be wonderful if you would consider gifted and give them home, maybe a permanent home there. And perhaps the, the need is there. If we were able to, if we were able to serve all of the cognitively gifted students that are identified, we could easily have three sections at each grade level without any trouble. So that's, you know.
We could, we could do the FTE, one of the classroom space.
That, that's, that's really where I was, I, you know, we're, this special session is really kind of trying to hammer down some facility ideas to move forward. And I wanted to.
I'm just telling you that, you know, if.
Yeah.
I'm a charge of the world.
Right. Well, and that's, that's what I'm hoping we will hear from all of you. You know, it's, it's always limited resources and space, and I get that. But I take very seriously, we take very seriously, the benchmark vision that, of our statement, benchmark for excellence.
Sure.
So if that's what we are trying to become, then I just wanted to, I just wanted to, okay, is it a, is it a facility issue or an FTE issue? And I think I'm hearing both and, but I'm hearing that, well, yeah, we could FTE it. Well, in the best of all situations, we could FTE it, but we still would lack the space.
Correct. There's currently no space.
I wanted to make sure I was understanding. I didn't mean to cut you off. Thank you.
No, that's fine.
Just wanted to hear that.
If we were able to, at some point in the future, have three sections, then we could have a set cut score for each year. If you meet the cut score for gifted cognitively in the state of Ohio, which is 128 on most measures, then we would be able, there wouldn't be a discussion, there would be no explanation as to why 128 didn't get in, 129 did. And honestly, it's never been as low as 129 because of the, the limited space.
So as a follow on to that, I, I need a little bit of help historically. When did we, as a district, begin moving cohorts and sections of gifted and talented through our lower grades?
Self-contained?
Yeah. When do we, when do we build that structure?
I, I want to say they began, and I have all of this in a presentation I gave to our administrative team last year, so I can share that with you. But I want to say it was the 80s that they started looking at it. And it's kind of ebbed and flowed over time based on the resources that we've had in the district. At one point, we were only doing fourth and fifth grade. At one point, we were doing one section of third, one section of fourth, one section of fifth. And now we're, we're kind of back to the most that we've ever had, which would be two sections at each grade level.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for Vicki? Vicki, when you consider some spaces we've done, let's take Walnut Springs, Center for Inspiration, Norris Shop, how do facilities like those play into what, what our vision would be for gifted education?
Those would be critical to that, mainly because, and one of the things that we've been able to do at the self-contained, or in the self-contained program, is work on projects like Genius Hour, where these kids are allowed to, to take the things that inspire them and take it to that next level, research it, explore it, which are the kinds of things that you're able to do in Maker Space and, and the shop. You can go above and beyond the curriculum. And we're working hard to, to meet those needs now. I was talking to Dr. Kellogg earlier, we had a meeting after school today with a student who's a seventh grader, and she made a 30 on the ACT, you know, just recently, as a seventh grader. She She met with a data scientist from IBM, and we're working on a mentorship, mentorship, because she's really interested in statistics, and that's what she wants to do, and that's what she wants to explore because of the real-world applications. And Maker Spaces and the shop are wonderful opportunities to do those real-world applications. So that would be critical if we could have that everywhere. As we move forward, our kids would be in much better shape.
One of my, my personal general reflections about gifted education is that we do a great job building accelerated curriculum and more rigorous curriculum and helping kids do that. So, you know, Algebra I in sixth grade and these other things, right? The space that I think all public schools really lack is just that place for gifted kids to go off and explore. I mean, all kids like that, but the research on gifted kids on this one is, is really poignant in terms of what it says, where we have a prescribed curriculum that they, in many cases, they can do well with. We have a, we have, like all school districts, a fair number of gifted kids who are under the radar and underperforming because our prescribed curriculum isn't what lights them up. There's something else they want to do. They want to talk about dinosaurs, and we're not on that unit. They want to investigate engineering, and we're not in that class. So spaces where they can do that, like the Genius Hour, or Maker Spaces, or these other opportunities, I think are critical to feeding some of their interests, all students' interests, clearly all students' interests. But there is a, a portion of our population that really thrives on this in terms of pulling the lid off of their capacity. So we have a, I would argue, we have a fair number of, of gifted children who kind of stymied in school because the prescribed curriculum and accelerated track isn't necessarily what they're looking for. And that's where I look at those kinds of spaces.
I think it might be helpful at some point in our ever-growing, more crowded board agendas to have a discussion about gifted, so that there is an understanding of what our gifted program is, what it is not, and why it matters. Because too often, people think that the space needs and the FTE needs of gifted are just something like whipped cream and cherries on a sundae, instead of looking at what the research says. And when we're looking at children who are placed in the self-contained classrooms for gifted, it's a phrase that probably will, well, one day it'll get me in trouble. Basically, we're looking at the children who are severely gifted. They are the ones who have very strong needs as regards difference in instruction, and as regards difference in attention to socio-emotional development. When you talk about the research that talks about places for gifted children, severely gifted children, as well as gifted kids, as well as all kids, but when we're talking about severely gifted kids, the importance of space to their development is key. The development socio-emotionally of those students is often carried out through the type of spaces that we're talking about. So I think it might be helpful at some point, I don't know how we want to talk about it, whether we want to do it at a board meeting, whether we want to do it in reports just sent out or whatever, to explain why it matters.
I'd be delighted.
Because when we talk about, you know, they need places to grow and make and do, every kid needs places to grow and make and do. Why does it matter that they have different space and different FTE? It matters to me. I'm not asking that. That's a rhetorical question.
My definition, my definition of fair is everybody getting what they need, not necessarily the same thing. So I'd be happy to, to share everything. We have a number of School G courses currently that are used for gifted PD for teachers, one of which looks at the social, social and emotional impact of, of gifted students, how they're impacted by that, and their asynchronous development. I'm happy to share that with you guys. If you're interested, it wouldn't take you very long to get through. It's a nice little prezi that I developed, but that could give you some, some nice background of, of that piece as well.
I'm also a big fan of who's doing it right, right? So, and I, I'd like to see us start to cast the net of who's doing it right a little bit further out than Central Ohio, right? There's got to be model schools in the public education system that, that are doing it right, because it's interesting, just sitting here scrolling through some quick searches, it's actually kind of astounding. Limited space seems to be the defining characteristic of gifted programs. And I mean, I'm not talking about just school districts like us. I'm talking about New York City. They cap their GNT percentile at, their Gift and Talent Entry is 97%, but they cap it at 99% because they don't have the space. So it seems to me, when we hear all of this, you know, media, as well as some community voice attention relative to how poorly, you know, public education is doing, if we don't have a place to put, you know, two-thirds of the gifted students, to give them an opportunity to excel, it seems like we're not necessarily putting, you know, eyes and efforts on, on things that are going to change that perception. Because obviously, we've got kids that are gifted and talented and don't have that opportunity, let alone the ones that we haven't discovered yet, right? So, so I'd, I'd really be interested in any, any model schools out there that might, it might be worth us looking at as a board, so.
Happily, as compared to some of the other school districts in our area, we do serve in grades K-5 all students that are identified in reading, math, or cognitive ability. They get some level of service, which is, it's not always been that way, but it's something that we've been developing and trying to increase over the last four years. And if you, you don't have to go very far to, to see exactly what you're talking about, you either make it or you don't. And if you don't, even though you might be gifted, you don't get service.
Before we leave that, when we talk about best-in-class, so to speak, Westerville, we've got a lot of history here, so I'll do another history lesson. Westerville in the 80s had a reputation across the state in the early 90s of being cutting-edge as regards our gifted program. We still, we have come back to much of the pieces of that gifted program that we had then, and we have expanded beyond that, particularly as regards to self-contained. However, where we have made progress, but I would like to see us make more, and I think we see it in some best-of-class, and there's not, not a whole lot out there that, that I can think of around here in particular. What we are working on, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of moving it forward, is working to better infuse differentiation within the classroom itself for the students who do not have the, the need or who cannot be served in a self-contained classroom. So we actually have a very old reputation for gifted, but we kind of let it slide, and then we let it stagnate. And a lot of that has to do with budgets and space. And we also have never addressed effectively, in my mind, what happens to these children after they leave elementary school and move into the middle school. It's a little too haphazard, again, budgets and space.
So if it's okay, let Lucy talk a little bit about ESL, which is now EL. We have to change all of our cards, all of our letterhead now, because we have a name change. Thanks, Lucy.
Yeah. As far as it goes, I may have screwed up. All righty, well, our EL program, currently, we have about 1,400 students. We just had, got our results this morning, and that's why Brandy was working on my results, Vicky. Sorry, you had to come after ours. But we did exit 204 students this time. We exited 289 last year. So it's leveling off to about where it should be. So between the new enrollments and over the summer, my guess is we're going to come back to 1,400. That seems to be the level that we've been staying at, with the exception of last year where we were at 1,600. That was our all-time high. I don't anticipate seeing that 1,600 again unless something changes in the government. That's all we'll say there. We have seen less enrollment, I think, than typically we do. But anyway, for our elementary program, it's basically a pull-out program. We provide support for our lower-level English learners, 30 minutes a day in a pull-out situation. Our pair professionals, our ESL pair professionals serve the higher-level students twice a week for 30 minutes on a tutoring-type basis. We use, we utilize spaces for that pull-out space. Basically, we have classroom space in every school. Most of the time, two or three of our professionals are sharing a space, which is fine. It works out fine. We have small groups of kids, so it, it's fine. Just keeping in mind that when we are taking a space for EL, obviously, that takes a space from classroom space. But currently, we don't have in, in the elementaries, no students in hallways or anything, or in little tiny office spaces or anything like that. Happy to say that at this point, all elementaries are in a classroom space, be it a shared space. It's still an adequate space at this point for elementary kids. In terms of middle and high school, that model looks a little bit different. Those are middle and high school. Walnut Houses are emerging our lower-level students at the middle school level. They have sheltered programs, so those take up classroom spaces, but we are adequately spaced there at Walnut and in our other middle schools. For high school, North and Central have our emerging students. And again, they have sheltered classrooms. And when I mean sheltered instruction, it's all EL with co-taught using the PSYOP model. And again, for the most part, we have adequate space in those schools as well. The only challenge we have at secondary level is really at Central, which is a crowded space, crowded school anyway. But with the help of Brad Adams, we're looking at moving into some better spaces. Our EL room currently at Central is a very tight, small room. We cram a lot of kids in a little bit of space. And then one of the spaces being used for a study hall-type pull-out help space is that space in the back of Central that I think maybe Dr. Kellogg shared at one point, that crowded space where 16 kids are crammed in this little space in the hallway that's not meant to. But again, next year, Brad Adams is looking at finding ELs in two other bigger spaces that'll be better suited for the space needs. So at this point, I don't see any particular needs in terms of space for our kids. I think we have adequate space at this point, with the exception of Central. It's being looked at and addressed for next year. So I feel confident that Central will be able to help us out next year.
So when you say that, it surprises me a little bit. A couple of weeks ago, Jeff and I were looking at some land up at Genoa, because the township is once outside of Genoa and Faus, and we stuck, we snuck in Faus for a little bit. We were taking a tour, and there's some spaces there that, you know, our EL students are using that I thought were really small. And maybe that's typical. Maybe that's what you think is okay. But when you are thinking of, I mean, to me, it was almost a long-type hallway with shelving and-
Yeah.
No windows.
Yes. There's a little, yeah. There is a very small room in Genoa. You're correct about that.
I mean, usable. I, yeah, appropriate. That's, I mean, I will tell you, when I went home, it bothered me.
Yeah. Yeah.
It makes me think of those.
I know what room you're talking about, too. Excuse me. And I would agree that that particular space is tight. It's like the, the central space is tight. There are a couple tight spaces like that. There are not very many, but there's a couple like that, that yes.
I appreciate you saying that, Tracy, because I really thank you, I thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for coming and sharing this. And I'm hearing you say that space, let's call it square footage, we, we have enough, you're saying, we, we got enough. Some of it's not quite as. So what I wrote down, my question really dovetails a little bit on that. So this is a special session to talk about facilities and, and space usage. What would you say, and I, and I, again, I, you know, it's all limited, but if we are to try and communicate to the community and seek from the community input and suggestions and ideas and so on, what, what would you say? Well, we may have enough, but what would be helpful in our spaces? Or what, our best spaces have this, and our ELL learns best and is most creative when they are able to, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, flesh that out a little bit for us.
Yes. I think if, if they all had a classroom space when they go to their EL class, if it was a classroom space that was equally equipped, just like any other, it would be better. We're talking space, I think, but one of the struggles that we do have is technology, a Chromebook issue, because a lot of our ELs have to share, and our teachers are sharing those Chromebooks, and it becomes difficult for our kids to get access to the Chromebooks all the time. So that is a, a challenge. So in, in my perfect world, they'd have a classroom space, because then they don't feel different. You know, when, when you're put into a little space like Mrs. Davidson was talking about, it kind of feels like I'm just being an afterthought, just putting in this little space that's left over. We do have small groups of kids, but I think ideally, to make them feel like they are just as important as everybody else, a, a classroom space like anybody else's classroom space, with the technology like anybody else's technology.
It feels like a classroom. I'm going for this. It feels like a classroom.
Yes.
And really, that's, that's, I don't want to make a big deal out of it. That's, that's just what I'm, I'm seeking, because I'm, I'm hearing, yeah, square footage, we're okay.
Yes.
Some of it may be a little, a little more truncated than what we wish it were. But technology and a space that feels like, this is just another classroom to me. I'm not being pulled, I get the pulled-out thing. I'm sometimes bothered by the pulled-out thing. And, but, you know, I got to work through that for this kind of situation. So that's what I was seeking. Thanks. That's, that's what I was seeking.
Thanks, Vicky. Any other questions for, uh, Lucy? Any other questions for Lucy? Gertie, you want to talk a little bit about specialized, which has some of the same features, but some growth pieces, I think? Thank you.
So I think, well, first of, I'm so glad to be here tonight. I did not have prepared any pretty paper for you guys. However, I have it. If you guys want my handwriting, you guys can have it. So I am very excited to hear what you said, Mr. Vlado, for the simple fact that, yes, we do know and understand that we do need the classroom places, spaces. A lot of the times when I go to some of my classes, when I see where my students are learning, and we know that they have the greatest needs, but yet they are in a small classroom, teachers have to share rooms, and it just, you know, it bothers me because, you know, you want for these children to have the best experience in school. But I like the question that you just exclusive, so I would prefer to go and answer that when you say, what would you need? Because if I have a list of what I need for my students, when I go visit other buildings, when I go visit other districts, when I see what they have, Jeff and I, we talked about it many times. I would love for some of my more specialized classrooms to have certain things, and other four children to have the life skills that they need. So when they go out in the regular world, they are able to know what it's like to make up a bed. So for example, for a multiple disability classroom, we know a lot of these children may or may not stay at home, may or may not live at home. Part of what we would like for them is to learn to do their own laundry, is to learn for them to be able to wash their own dishes. So if we could go about what it is that we want for these classrooms, we talk about that all the time. For example, I know at Central, they do have a washer and dryer. Are students really able to utilize them, right? So those are the things that I think are children that will not be able to stay in their own home, ever. But if we can provide some of those things for them, at least they can do their own laundry. So when we think about children with autism, I would love for them to be able to have a sensory room that have access to just all the inputs and outputs that they would need. So whenever they are being bothered, whenever something is bothering them, they will be able just to know how to de-escalate themselves and again, be ready for learning. When I think of children with low cognitive abilities, I would love for these children to know how to count money. I would love for these children to know how to have self-help skills. So when they go out, they can do these things on their own. So yes, we do know having the space is really what's needed. However, if we can have all of these different things to help them, so when they are ready, when they leave us, when they are 21 or 22, they actually can have those skills. Those are the things that I would want for our kids.
Gertie, when you look at the distribution of classroom space for our highest-needs students, right? Our, our, our low-incidence populations, talk a little bit about how decisions are made about where to place those units at which schools. So we know some schools have them, some schools don't. How does that come about?
So that's what I had prepared earlier. For example, since I have been in this position, we have created 12 new programs based on the needs of the students that we have. Yes, you would think, because our numbers are not really that high comparing to four, five years ago. However, the needs that they have, there's just so much more, and also, the classroom has to be lower. So because, for example, a classroom with multiple disabled students, you can't have no more than eight students in these classrooms. you can't have no more than eight students in these classrooms. So because of that, we have to have the space for them. So when, for example, this year, we have 13, we have 11 students coming from downstairs with autism from the preschool, and I have to find a kindergarten classroom for them, and I have to find two kindergarten classrooms for them, because for autism, they have to only be six per classroom. So right now, I have to go and find out where would those classrooms be? And we also have about eight students that are coming from downstairs with multiple disabilities. Again, I have to find classroom for the students. It's not like I can just put them wherever I want, because then they would not have the programs for them. So over the years that I have been here in this position, I have had to create 12 different programs. Last year, I created four different programs. And next year, it's also going to be four different programs that I have to create. And most of them are low, low student ratios, and I have to find building places for them. One thing that always hurts me at the end of this year, at the end of every year, I have to call, for example, I have a school that I have to call the parents to tell them, I am sorry, your program will no longer be in that building because the building needs a classroom. So it, it hurts every year when I have to call and say, I am so sorry. I know your student has been there for a couple of years. However, the, the program has to be moved from another program. Did I answer that question?
Yeah, and I think that one is even more poignant, because you're talking about special needs populations that are now, we've all, regardless of children, if you've ever had your kid change schools, right, and all the relationships in the neighborhood and all the things that go with that and relationships, I think that's an important piece. And I think you hit the nail on the head. We have, we have some buildings that have multiple programs, because at the time we needed them, we found the space and there it went. So it's not even really driven by location of the students in homeschool. Oftentimes, these students are placed in programs, which is not uncommon, being placed in programs that are not at their homeschool. And we have some schools with multiple programs, because they had multiple space, and other schools with none or few, because they didn't have as much space. So from an efficiency standpoint, for example, transportation, right, that's got to play, that's got to be a factor in our costs and our efficiencies when we're not being able to choose programs around operational efficiency or how long that student's going to be on a bus or where that bus is driving to. It's only being placed because we happen to be able to carve out a space in a particular building. That's, that's problematic.
Well, that goes to a concern and a curiosity that I have. So everything that we've done in this district for a long time is, a space is a space is a space, right? Four walls, door, windows, space. So if we embark on an effort to address our students' needs with need-specific construction, whether it be gifted and talented, whether it be ELL, whether it be special needs, how do we navigate the, the principal's administrative prerogative to repurpose square footage? Right, how, I mean, I think this is the challenge, right? These dedicated spaces do not exist in public schools today, because walls and floor are walls and floor, and I have more students, and I need to push your program out, and I need to place those students there. So how do we navigate that reality?
From, from my experience in current construction design, what you see more often is discussion about small group instruction spaces specific to these kinds of programs, which did not occur when the bulk of our fleet were, were built, right? There was no, there was no, our ELL population, Jeff's slide in demographics back, back in 2001, which is modern history compared to special education in 1974. These, these program pressures weren't part of building designs at that point. Now, when you look at, you know, you know, I have background experience with building from my Southwestern days. And if you go and you look at, as we did the elementary designs there, it was a kit of parts, they described it as. And part of the kit of parts was, how many small group instruction spaces do you need in that building? And where do you want them located? So for example, take gifted pullout. Many of the classroom spaces at those elementaries in Southwestern were designed with a small group instruction space that was located next to a regular classroom, for the purpose of, I need to pull some ELL kids for a few minutes and do a pullout over in this room. Let me pull them out and do it over here. Let me pull the gifted kids out. And then specific to special education rooms, specialized education rooms, and some of the equipment Gertie's talking about, those now become part of the conversation when you're doing construction that didn't exist. And, and I think Jeff made a good point, even going back to the conversation about safety. Okay, we're talking about 2001. So the impetus on safety design, particularly entries, is a, I hate to conjure up the memory, a post-Columbian event, 1999? So that entryway security, which we see at Faust and Alcott and Central, didn't exist. Then people didn't talk about it. And so there's a lot of factors that play in that. So if you, if you didn't have that problem before, you didn't build for it, you didn't design for it, right? So it does look different. I think it is a more, it is more accounted for in discussion. When you talk to people who build school facilities, they're going to ask you these questions. And they're going to account for them. How many of these rooms do you need and where do you want them? Special Ed's a little bit trickier, because of the nature of the changing population and the fact that you do run into situations where the, the numbers of kids don't allow you to necessarily house everybody at their homeschool. But there's an efficiency to this about how many units do we need? And where do we put them for transportation purposes and time on bus purposes for kids? That we, we don't get to capitalize on, right? How you set that up, so.
Well, and the categorization or the, the process for identifying special needs continues to either expand and grow and changes some, the definitions sometimes change a little bit.
I would say autism is probably the, the most recent example of that, right? When did that become a category? I don't know off the top of my head, I should, more recent memory.
Correct, correct.
Well, and that was, and that was my example, because the broad, you know, and the breadth of the, the spectrum and, and so on. And then what we would call severe students, disabled, multiple
Multiple disabilities.
disabilities. And, and I, I appreciate, Dr. Kellag, you pointing out, and I, I take you at your word that when we have these kinds of facilities discussions, whoever we eventually engage and talk with, that they will be wise enough to keep prompting us and saying, well, how are you, how are you teaching? How are you, how are you, how are you teaching students? Because that's what your building needs to be designed around, that methodology, and not, not so much just a cookie cutter kind of numbers game.
I, I think, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, if we go back to point view, and we consider this question of small group intervention programs, whereas rather than, we had discussions about how many small group instruction rooms. But the other piece that Jeff and his team did in design was the kinds of spaces outside of classrooms and in hallways and furniture that we set up. So when you go down the new wing of point view, and it's got that beautiful architecture, there's kind of that wavy feeling to it to go with the water theme, right? The kind of furniture we put there, which is flexible and movable to allow a teacher to say, hey, these four kids out here on these benches work in this space, which is comfortable. Some of that, I, I saw the same kind of design when I was at Southwestern with the elementaries, where the corridor, the hallway corridor was very, became a flexible space for both large group instruction, let's bring all three third grade classrooms into this space in the hallway with technology, right? Or, as Jeff did at point view, small group. And then we had specialized classrooms, there's a special education room there, going back to Gertie's conversation, with all kinds of furniture and design pieces that go after some of the pieces we're trying to, so she has her own space and then the right furniture and the right design for that, for that space.
And that is the reason that they are getting my AU classroom next year.
So I'm, really great dialogue on the topic. I'm, I'm still kind of coming back around to probably the core of my original question, which is that getting it built, getting it identified, getting people in the right places, getting the right instructional architecture and construct in place. I'm still feeling like going down that path is great, but we're, we've got work to do from an operate the, the building and run the engine standpoint for that. Let me be frank, I mean, we invest the community's money in addressing students' needs, which is exactly the right thing to do. And then five years later, that room is being used for something else, right? That's an operational consideration that I, I want us to be putting some eyes on, because we have to, we have to change the script that, in particular, our school principals are operating off of, right? Right now, it's their domain, it's their land, it's their territory. And, and I've seen that distribution happen, you know, time and time again, right? Where all of a sudden walk into a building, point view was really interesting. It was a distribution by necessity, right, before the, before the, the reconfiguration. But it, we can't think differently about how we're going to build our facilities if we're not going to think differently about how to run them.
I, I agree. So it's kind of the inventory of classroom spaces and uses and what they're designated for. And what typically happens is more of about a negotiation, right? So a building will say, I may not have the space. And we do a field trip, meaning we go to the building and, because we poke around, we look, and we negotiate and talk about and look for that. If, if you have an inventory around what kinds of spaces we have to meet those needs and designate those spaces, and, and then I think we're in a position to not do what we're doing now, which is trying to cobble it together. And I think that's, that's a good point as to what, what should it look like? If it's okay, Gertie, thank you. Gertie got back today and was told this morning and has to be here.
Very tired.
And I appreciate that. So I also asked Jen Knapp and Jen Frye from the curriculum department to be here. One of the projects that they have managed for the last three years has been a learning and teaching roadmap. And it's been a while since we've visited that with the board and I've shared copies. But if you go into that document, you will notice that there are actually diagram facilities descriptions in there around what should a 21st century teaching and learning space look like? And this is even specialized programs. What do we want our classrooms to look like? We put a, a pretty hefty demand, one of the shifts that have created a heavy demand, I think, on our teaching population has been, I'll call it, for lack of better terms, the science behind what teaching should look like. And the science behind what teaching should look like, based on how kids learn, calls for an instructional design that is far from what old people like me experience, right? The sage on the stage is no longer the place to be. Let me just put 25 kids in front of you and tell you stuff and you listen, right? It doesn't work that way, well anymore. And, and this, but the spaces we have still are, support that model from a furniture perspective, from a technology perspective. So when you put heavy demands on teachers to, with an expectation to change instructional practice, one of the limiting factors can be, well, how am I supposed to do that in this classroom? Let's take project-based learning, which is, which is a wonderful movement of instructional design and what, what it can look like, problem-based, project-based learning. First thing you get back is, where am I supposed to put all this stuff? Where's the equipment? Where's the place for my kids to work in teams? How do I move the furniture out? All those components. And so I, I thought I'd let Jen Frye and Jen Knapp talk a little bit about what they're seeing and what we're experiencing in some of the projects we have done from general classrooms, as well as to talk about what we're trying to accomplish. So long-winded introduction.
Yes, and so we're, we'll, we'll go back and forth, I'm sure. As part of the roadmap, you may know, when we went to two to one, we were able to free up some classroom space as we took out all of the computers in our computer labs and many of our buildings to allow for an extra classroom. So on top of all this, we still are adding or have added more classroom space, which freed up some opportunities for us to have all-day kindergarten. At our high school, we're still in need of some of those computer labs, so that's not really an opportunity. We've kind of gotten to our point of having those minimized as much as humanly possible. We have added a lot of programming. I, I love to come up here and present to you when we're adding Project Lead the Way courses, when we're adding additional art courses at the middle school. Art Foundations ran for the first time this year, and we increased FTE. But that means, you know, for example, Blendon had one art teacher. Now they have two art teachers, okay? Where's that other art teacher going to go? So those are constantly things that we work at, mostly at the secondary level when we expand programming, is how is it all going to fit? And that kind of goes, Richard, to your point of, again, Blendon is my home building. So the engineering teacher had taken over the second art classroom. So then it's working with, you know, Mr. Reeves and Mr. Harris about how's, where are we going to find a great spot for our art teacher now that we have reconfigured that space to support engineering and design? Or how can we do that and complement each other? You know, technology is a lot about, and the, you know, 21st century learning environment is a lot about flexibility. Dr. Kellag started to allude to that. We've worked very closely with our IT department to have mounted projectors, to have interactive whiteboards, our whiteboards generally speaking. As we continue to evolve, hmm, is the mounted projector the best place to do that? And the number of times that we've been called, hey, I used to have this as a space that was used for X. Now it's going to instruct students, I need a projector, I need a whiteboard, I need to make this space, as small as it may be, to have it, to look as much as it can as a typical, typical classroom. So that's something that happens quite often. As Dr. Kellag alluded to, furniture is, is kind of a stumbling block for us. When a sixth grade math teacher says, I'm trying to put my kids in group, but they're in armchairs. Or even when you put the desks together, when I put all the materials, they fall through the hole because the desks don't, I mean, I know it's silly, but teachers get frustrated when, when little things like that happen, or their students can't get in and out of chairs easily because of how they're trying to work together. And I know that Jen Frye has a lot more to say on this, so I'm going to go back and forth with you. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I'll point to an example. Have you been in the CFI, sorry, have you been in the CFI when it's full of students? So when I was last in the CFI and it was full of students, there are kids that are working collaboratively at the cafe tables. There are kids who are sitting around the fireplace area, working independently on Chromebooks or collaborating. There's kids who are off in the, the classroom space doing something. There's kids who are in the other classroom space. You could throw open the garage door and be outside and have that interaction between the outdoors and the indoors. And then there's kids that are in the maker space. And then there's the library media specialist in the middle of it all, on the high-top table, with kids doing, I don't even know what. I mean, just some crazy amazing things. Totally student-centered, there was a million kids in there. They just want to be there. And it's, everyone is engaged, there's more kids than I could count, but everybody is doing something productive. And when you think about some of our other library media centers, or you think about some of our classrooms, like Jennifer just said, there isn't the student-centered feeling to that at all. There's the tablet armchairs, which lend themselves to be lined up in rows that face the front of the room, where the teacher is the director of the learning. And that's what the room feels like. And no matter how you try to change instruction, when the room is set up that way, it's awfully hard to change the whole feel of the environment. So that's something I think about a lot. And we've had the opportunity to go and visit spaces in other districts. We've been to, I've been to Big Walnut, we've been to Mentor, who has done some amazing things with classroom spaces and their library media center of their high school. Marysville STEM High School has done some amazing things with space. Grandview, New Albany have just amazing spaces that are very flexible. Furniture like we see at point view that can go together, come apart. There's just any number of different ways that you can arrange things that's very different from what we can do in many of our classrooms now. What Jennifer said about technology, we're definitely in a thinking space about that and in a trying out space. We have a few classrooms at Hawthorne that need, need to have kids to be able to see what's going on. Instead of projectors, we're going to try big LED TVs that are not mounted. So they're able to be wheeled around anywhere in the classroom, and then they're also flexible to go up and down. So when a classroom becomes fifth grade, but it was kindergarten, we can appropriately raise the technology. When it becomes kindergarten again, we can put it right back down. The way we have our technology set up right now, the whiteboard is on the wall. That's where it's going to be. Doesn't matter if you're this tall or you're this tall, and same goes for Doesn't matter if you're this tall or you're this tall, and same goes for the teacher. So, that kind of flexibility with technology, I think, is also something we really need to think about.
So, I think that our own lessons learned are certainly some of the best examples that we can gain knowledge from, right? I'm hearing something that, that comes together here that, that I'm going to suggest needs to be part of our thinking. I think, like, I may be blunt about it. I think that, as we've looked at the change, not just in, you know, whatever the data was that was being, you know, ground up and spit out in 2001, subsequently through 2013 or whatever, what we also see, on top of the aging fleet of the schools, is we see some significant changes in terms of learning environments and, and expectations in terms of students from, from socio-behavioral, cultural, all these different aspects. One thing that I do know, though, is, is that with Walnut Springs and Point View, the consistent theme that I'm hearing, and I just heard it echoed, is, is that by choosing to configure those spaces the way that we did, we maximized flexibility of purpose, right? We created a Swiss Army knife, right? I, I can use that space for classes, I can use it for overflow, I can use it for engineering, mathematics, I can use it, use it, use it, use it, use it. So, maybe one of our touchstones for Facilities Committee or ongoing conversations about what our schools need to look like, needs to rotate around that concept. I mean, frankly, it's cost-effective. It, it isn't a massive rebuild. It creates opportunities. It introduces the potential for not just existing, but additional programming. And it may be useful for us to think of something as radical as, what would it look like if every one of our schools had one of those? Whether it was bolted on, or it was reconfigured of existing, what would that do for the district? Because that type of experience that you've had is what my experience is like anytime I peek my head into Point View or into Walnut Springs, right? It's, we're getting maximum benefit for the taxpayers based upon what we did in those two schools.
Yeah, I think, well, actually, no, you're thinking exactly was where mine was. As I was listening, I was thinking, "Well, what I don't want to do is create new spaces or reconfigured spaces that, in three years, will be obsolete, as some of our spaces are currently." So, what I hear from our program people is, we need small-group instruction spaces, and we also need to explore how to do that within some different concepts, as we have done at Point View and Walnut Springs. We need to look very seriously at loose furnishings. We need to spend a lot of time thinking about how we can change out the furnishings that are in our classrooms, that are in our buildings, so that we can better utilize the space that we have and shift the usage of those spaces as, as time and need suggests needs to happen. We also do have the need for some additional full-size classrooms within the flexibility model that, you know, seems to me to be pretty clear. And we also need to tie all of that to professional development. So, you know, I'm seeing kind of a shift in my thinking about how I was approaching a lot of the facilities work here. What I am thinking most predominantly of at this point is still not age. It is flexibility, and how we best configure for flexibility, and how we best use non-structural components to do that in ways that make sense for us. In addition to some structural.
There are a couple other planning questions that we had batted around and threw up there as well. We kind of went through that current curriculum program limitations. We thought it was important to talk about what it means to just maintain the fleet, and having a fleet that really meets the current long-range plans for us. That discussion doesn't even account for future opportunities. Jeff mentioned all-day kindergarten, magnets, career tech, preschool space, have 205 seats in preschool, always a high demand, demand there, it's a big community value on that one. Jeff mentioned career technical spaces, which can be separate facilities, it can also be embedded within your facilities. So, if there's other, there's other questions up there, if you want to explore them, we're happy to do that as well.
Jennifer, again, Jeff, I'd actually like to ask you a question of your opinion of development over in Dublin. What's your, I mean, this, I'm catching you completely on the fly on this one. What's your feeling about what they did with the Verizon buy? And, you know, buying an existing commercial building, you know, which is significantly cheaper, I mean, they're buying a shell, right? And it's going to be, you know, fit for specific purposes from their programming standpoint. But what do you think about an approach like that from a cost-saving standpoint?
I think this building is a great example of that. So, we have done that, and if there's other opportunities like that, we should explore that.
Great, yeah. I mean, I, I don't disagree with you. This, this facility is certainly in that category. But then, you know, just thinking about it from a classroom or a program-specific standpoint, I was kind of curious what your thoughts were, so.
Our careful point on this facilities that we haven't discussed, I want to throw on the table, I know you're aware of it, is the balance of facilities and operations to general fund costs. If you add a new building, right, into the fleet, there's general fund costs, staff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And going back to what Jeff put on the board in terms of current facility capacity, we have some places, elementary, for example, in which our current capacity against future enrollment, we have plenty of space. When you look at middle school, it starts to get tight. How tight? Hmm, questionable. You get to high school in the later years, it gets tight. Again, how tight? Questionable. And frankly, for me, more of an 11th and 12th graders need to be out of the building, go in other places for their educational experience anyway. Internships, shadowing experiences, more college credit classes on college campuses. We need more of our 11th and 12th graders getting out of that building and growing up elsewhere as part of their program, my view. So, when we're talking about space, I think we want to always balance that to this question of operational costs, because everything we do right now is based on the FTE and the building spaces, but those, but those limitations are, still exist. So, I think there's some balance question we at least acknowledge in a public discussion.
All right, so, I got to jump in and do the...
Oh, go ahead.
I got to state the obvious.
I'll turn mine.
Now, I know that, I know that we talked about, you know, energy around the southern end of the district, but this has been a curiosity to me since I moved into Westerville. And I'm eager for us to be addressing it, you know, through continuing but quick conversations. The, I get frustrated when I talk to parents who tell me that, you know, very specific about the terms that they use, that their kids are being bused, right? And they say, "I don't like," or the opposite, "I don't like kids being bused, in particular into my high school." And then, I always have to remind them that there is no middle school further north than Blendon. Like, so, literally, it's in the top, you know, third of the school district, and the lower, you know, two-thirds has no middle school. So, I'm always like, "No, we're sending kids to where the schools are physically." But we're decades down the path. We haven't addressed the fact that our, our building population does not match our geographic footprint. So, you know, the need in the southern end is, in my mind, is not a need based on population or student placement, it's a need based on the fact that nobody put any schools down there, right? And if I'm not mistaken, the history of the land, just, let's forget about the piece within Minerva Park right now. The history of Minerva Park itself is that that school, once Minerva Park came into Westerville City School Districts, was their school and land and came to us. Is that correct? I mean, I know that Hawthorne was built much later, but the mechanics of all that land down there is that it was part of Minerva Park's own school district until they became a part of ours.
That's something that I'm not familiar with. So, I'm not going to say, even though I actually grew up in Minerva Park, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, and we're talking back when there was an amusement park.
Yes, it's, that's...
Right, I mean, we're talking a century ago, right?
And the school that you may be thinking of is a school that no longer is a school. There was a building long predating Hawthorne that the district got rid of as a function of the land grabs before Win-Win. It sat, it's now a church, and there've been some additions to it and so forth. That was Minerva Park School. And Minerva Park School was right there on Cleveland Avenue, just slightly north of the turn into Minerva Lake Drive. That's probably the building you're thinking of.
Yeah, good, good. Okay, so, the, for me, and I'm glad you brought up Win-Win, right? The lines are drawn, right? The boundaries are there. Let's, let's not have hesitation about talking about the southern end of the district. And let's have some energy behind really talking about solutions, right? I know that there was hesitance, you know, based upon those agreements in the past. Now, that's done. So, I really think that we need to do the right thing for our community and for our students in the entire district, because the questions and the concerns that come up aren't just isolated towards, you know, the southern end of the district. They're the realities that we have with transportation and logistics and all of these other issues that we have, because we just haven't been to a point where we could address that topic, right? And it needs to be addressed now.
Can I chime in here? So, I get where you're going, I understand that, and I think that we do need to start a conversation about that, but I'm a little concerned about our aging buildings, that we aren't addressing needs in, or we're just putting Band-Aids on, I will say again. So, as we look at this Facilities Committee, I would recommend that that all comes together, meaning, let's talk about the buildings that need help right now. In addition to that, what will the community support? Because we don't know what they will support. And we know exactly how people talk about it. I think this, this part of it is going to be a big discussion, but when we look at the numbers back up on the screen of our, and I don't want to say older, but I'll say buildings in need, I think we need to look at those first.
I think, I mean, I 100% agree with you, but I think there's also an additive to that, right? And that is that there are some buildings in our fleet that, and let me just be frank, we can't reconfigure them, right? Right, they're, they're just, whether it's the land space, or it's the, it, Westerville South is a great example to me, right? It, it's been pieced together over time, and, and, you know, some of the pieces have, you know, have definitely served their purpose, but when we look at how that school is stitched together, right? It's really stitched together. It's kind of a patchwork quilt of a building, right? So, the question becomes is, is, is that a configurable space based on those constraints? And that's just one example. I mean, Central College is a great example, right? That, that reconfiguration there is just highly problematic, because it's a very strange parcel and a very kind of odd little building. So, yeah, I mean, that's definitely got to be part of, of a big, probably the larger part of the conversation. I mean, our conversations, as it orients towards new in the southern end of the district, or additive in the southern end of the district, certainly can be developed over a longer-term horizon, but we've got schools that have needs now, right? And those got to get fixed.
I, I think, when we think about the schools that have needs now, I view those on a continuum. And there is a lot of gray in that, because when we talk about reconfiguring, that means to some people one thing that it doesn't mean to others. You know, and how far do we go when we talk about reconfiguring? And what is reasonable, what is appropriate? That's, there is much room for discussion and much room for different opinions on the continuum about that. So, I think the, the south-end piece actually is more concrete in a lot of ways, as we talk about the issues that need to be addressed. How we choose to do that, when we choose to do that, how far out that's going to be pushed, those are the discussion points around there. The immediate needs within our current fleet of buildings, that's a different discussion altogether. So, I'm looking at immediate needs, and how that then bleeds into reconfiguration approaches and needs, and how that then bleeds into the larger question of a facility lifespan. So, for me, I'm very much interested, and I didn't see it on our next step slide, in really looking at what is hot right now. What do we really need to put money in, in our buildings at this point in time? Where do we look at that so that we configure that into our planning on where we want to eventually land on this continuum of gray? Because there is a lot to discuss around what reconfiguration should occur, where, when, and what should not.
Is it okay? So, I think that we do need to talk about renovating or reconfiguring, whatever word you want to use. I think that, you know, we have some property at the southern end that we could, you know, potentially build new schools, but I do think, in the past, we've kind of rushed to build new buildings, and so, the renovations haven't really happened, maybe like they probably should have over time. So, I really would like to focus on our current fleet first, and figure out, can we renovate or reconfigure some of the buildings, including South, to see what is possible, if, if that's something that Jeff can look into specifically, I'd appreciate that. I do think that, as Nancy mentioned, I mean, age is not the, the final decision-maker, I think that, or whether it's 66% of the value, or whatever special number you're going to look at. I mean, I think that there's lots of things that you'll need to consider. The building design, what's currently available, programming needs, community value on the building history. We do have some historical buildings in our fleet, and we need to think about whether the communities really attach to them or not. Also, other assets that the building may have, do we just put in a new HVAC system? Do we just replace the roof? I mean, I think those kinds of things are things you want to think about when looking at renovating and reconfiguring, so. And then, of course, the cost and feasibility, so.
Jerry, you raise a good point. I want to make sure that I differentiate the terms. So, renovate, to me, is simply updating existing. And reconfiguring is changing within the footprint that we have. So, literally, moving walls or adding, I mean, Point View is just such a great example, right? We, we not only changed the interior from a design standpoint, but we added onto, onto it, and fundamentally, it's an entirely new building, right, in terms of the way that it's structured now. So, that would be a reconfiguration versus a renovation, to me.
The more traditional pressure points that, that you see, I think, as I think about it, one is usually enrollment, right? Well, what I'm sure is that we don't run out of room, regardless of when that room is the way we want it to be. We, you know, we want to make sure we can get all the kids in the classrooms, right, at the lowest level. And so, we have that forecast, our internal, what we don't have is what OCCE would say enrollment forecast would be. Then, the second one is this, the adequacy of the current fleet. So, since 2001, we have spent millions of dollars on maintaining the fleet. There's, and I think Jeff and his team has done a fabulous job of stretching those dollars and keeping facilities up to date. So, I don't want anybody to think that it's like been this negligent thing that we didn't pay attention to. I think it's very important to say, "No, we have a list of projects that really, a lot of stuff that people don't even know happens, because they don't see that," right? But, but, what we don't know right now, today, regardless of how we slice it, we don't know what the number is. We don't have a school-by-school assessment of any sort. Forget whether or not it's, it's replaced or renovated. We don't have an assessment number of any sort since 2001, and lots have happened since 2001. So, when you talk about first steps, I think it's, let's make sure we have right capacity for the numbers of kids coming in, and then, we need to have a good understanding, however we want to develop that understanding, about what we, what we think our costs are for our current structures, and what would it take to invest and move those along. Then, we can get at some of these other broader questions that we're kind of presenting here. The point of this was to say, at one end, we can just pretty everything up and not spend, and minimize costs and have things look pretty much like they do today, but is that really meeting our kids' needs? And what, what would it take to get to that level, more like other school districts? So... So, there's a stair step in there. And I agree. I think you got to start with the current fleet.
And your point there underscores something that I wanted to bring out. We're going to have OFCC update the building condition assessments using their same methodologies, which I think are lacking in some ways. It suits them, it suits what they need to do. But I think we need a better balance there. So, we've got OFCC doing their work. We also have remarkable strength in Jeff and with the partners that he knows and brings into play to really help us get an understanding of what's truly needed to be done, not just how old something is. But, you know, where do we get that balance? Who do we bring in so that we get that inventory? Because I can't really look beyond the renovation stage until I know what that stage looks like, so that I can then begin to move beyond that. We have spent millions. And, you know, people tell me our buildings are a point of pride when they drive around the community. A lot of them haven't been in the buildings, but they know from the outside that they look darn good. Much is good. We know things need to be addressed. We know there are issues that need to be addressed. I don't want our decisions about that to be based only on the OFCC. So, I want us to bring in additional help to make that work and work closely with Jeff on that.
My example would be when, when you, when I had a roof put on my house and they told me 25 years. When I got close to the 25-year mark, I had to decide whether or not that was the time or could I go 26 or 27? So, so the company says 25-year roof, then you have to bring someone in and say, okay, it's 25, but does it really need, can I get another year? Have my maintenance, et cetera? And I think it's that same concept. Your HVAC system in your house, it's all the same thing. I mean, that's, that's the shared example. And then, you can patch and you can repair and you can fix things and you do that. But, you know, just the age doesn't matter, right? The other one I use with Jeff is, it seems to me every car in the world has to have the timing belt and water pump done at 100,000 miles. Now, why they always attach the timing belt to the water pump? Because they say the timing belt's getting ready to go. And if you're going to do the timing belt, you got to do the water pump. Why are those two always connected? There's probably a reason. Anyway, it's again, one of those things, but, but then that one's the luck of the dice. Because what they'll tell you is, you can go past 100,000, but it may become more expensive. Because when it does go, it's going to be a bigger problem. And I think that's a lot of what Jeff, Jeff's expertise is, is exactly right. We get from OFCC a date stamp, this is old, this is old, this is old. That lets us be more pragmatic in our approach to, okay, it's old, but does that mean it's got to go? Or does that mean it's still got life in it along the way? So, I, I agree. I consider the OFCC numbers a rough cut that give us more ability to be more specific about where we want to open doors and lift hatches and look more carefully about that age along the way. That's my thinking on it.
So, Nancy, are you thinking that we should hire someone else to do another feasibility study, maybe more in-depth at this time and compare?
Depending on how much it costs, but yeah, I would like to do that. You know, I, I think that would probably be a more prudent use of time and resources within the district, rather than saying, Jeff, produce this. I think it would be more appropriate for Jeff to help to coordinate that, but to bring in someone else. So, yes, I am saying that. Because what I also don't want, I, I view the OFCC as a rough cut as well, very much so. But what I don't want is for the OFCC work to become what it became in 2001, which is the determinant of all discussion that moves forward.
Yeah, I really like that idea. Because I, I feel like we, we have, you know, this, this document that unfortunately has become a self-fulfilling prophecy. And then, all other conversation about facilities doesn't rise above anecdotal, right? It, you know, it's, it's treated by some folks as, oh, it's just your opinion or you don't have anything to back that up. It would be great to have a second set of eyes and a, and a second set of reports relative to feasibility. I think that's an awesome idea.
I also think that's a really good idea.
I'm, I'm thinking to hire a, an educationally astute structural engineer who knows color palettes would be awesome. But I'm thinking that we have some of the expertise right here of what we want in our schools. We, we just talked to them. And I don't want to minimize the fact that what they are saying we need in our schools, we're going to hire somebody from the outside to trump OFCC. Because we don't, almost done, almost done. Because it, it seems to me, I like that idea. I, I think we should hire another person. I was only halfway kidding when I said the color palette thing. But somebody who has a real good sense of structural engineering and educational facilities. I'm, I'm not as biased against the age thing, just, just the older I get, the more I need to pay attention to stuff going wrong in me. So, I figure that happens in buildings too. I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned that we get really bogged down in this process and we just continue to piece things together page after page and, and millions of dollars. Do not hear me say I want to replace or do anything like that. I just want to make sure that we do not become so biased against OFCC, that we see it as, well, that's what they say. And we don't really trust them a lot. Because I, you know, trust but verify. Because I think there's some expertise there. And I, to me, I'm just glad they're doing a redo, you know? Oh, one, that's too far. That's too far ago. And if they only look at age, then I'd say the same thing. Well, but if they look at age and the list of what's been done, the HVAC is not 75 years old like the building is. It's eight years old. You got to account for that. We have some significant, I think, facility needs in light of, I think, in light of the condition of some of our facility and in light of what we were just told our facilities need to facilitate in 2017. This is not 1997 special education. This is not 2001 gifted. It's not even ESL anymore. It's now EL. So, I just, I, I don't know what other, I don't know what I'm saying other than I'm just, I'm just feeling like we need to make sure we bring the community into that committee that we've talked about. Everybody feels good about that, I think.
About a committee?
A committee, a community committee, perhaps a couple of us seated on it, some folks as well, right?
But not our committee, right?
Not our committee. We'd like to do a superintendent's. And to really see if we could move OFCC unless they change their initials as well.
So, if, if we, we're talking in a couple of years, though, if we wait for that to do anything?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm suggesting that that takes place because it gives us a new, a new document from which to talk in not 2001 terms.
Got you. So, even if we would have two feasibility studies to consider, you're thinking by fall? Because I think I wrote in my notes, three months for the study to take place?
As I understand from, from reading about it, and again, the meeting with them is next week, but their first cut on an assessment, I believe, is going to be age-driven. And that would happen within a two-to-three-month period with, with the report. There's another layer where they start to look at curriculum needs and develop from that, from the age assessment and expand on it. That's a longer process, as I understand it. So, again, I'll have more information after talking with them next week.
Okay.
So, is Nancy right then that they really are that heavily age-driven?
That's what this says?
Well, keep in mind, that was the initial phase that is not costing the district any money. So, as they get it more involved, I think there's an expectation with, with some level of commitment. I don't know, again, I need to better understand it. I've never worked with them in the past.
Sure. Okay.
I want to draw a line between assessments and feasibility studies because they're very different. And what we're talking about with the OFCC, trust but verify, OFCC and anyone else that we might bring in are assessments. That's the starting point. That's before we ever get to what we've talked about as regards program needs.
Right.
So, the initial assessments would be done within a period of months. And I don't think that we can move toward feasibility options until we understand the baseline assessments.
And where our buildings are, yes.
I, I guess when we talk about the notion of an independent evaluator, Rick, I hear you. I think that what, what I'm suggesting is, is that OFCC is not going to take all the folks at this room and the other folks that we have in this district that are highly valuable inputs into this process as part of their methodology, right? So, actually, what I'm saying is, is I would like to actually honor and respect the expertise and experience that we have in our district by creating a, a study that they'll be able to be a key part of, the primary part of, right? It's your inputs. Because I think it's, that's the value that, that I'm wanting is, is are the buildings configured to meet enrollment needs? Are the buildings configured to meet demographic, socioeconomic, socio-cultural? Are they, you know, oriented to be able to, you know, maximize, I mean, basic things? Are they oriented in such a way that we can maximize transportation and logistics, reduce costs there, you know, and be able to reduce the amount of transport time so that we're able to maximize a student's learning opportunity? Much, in my mind, it's a, it's a much more specific, here's what Westerville needs, right, evaluation. And, and to me, it sounds like, based upon our experiences for the last, you know, 15-plus years, to me, it sounds like smart money. Because I know that Jeff has put a ton of work in this over the years, right? But what we get from the ability to have an independent evaluator and that information put in is the ability to create that baseline that is reflective of us, right, and our students and our community and our needs. I just feel like with the OFCC, there's a massive amount of dilution that has to happen because they're evaluating us against the entire state, right? And, and when you get that broad, I don't know that, that you get specific value as a result of the, the outputs that you get. You get, I would bet you, we'll see a report from the OFCC, a free assessment, remember, you get what you pay for, that will tell me everything that I already knew and nothing more. And to me, that's too slow.
So, are there, are there, are there organizations that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let me, so, at the risk of saying it the wrong way, I'm probably the, if I'm wrong, tell me, I'm probably the only one who's recently been involved in an OFCC building project. So, what I'd encourage you to do is not, we're going down a path of assumptions about what they do and don't do for us. We know what we know today, which is we know they're going to do initially an assessment based on age and an enrollment. My experience with them, deeper in the process, and this is what I don't know, where that comes into when this happens, is that they indeed do bring in folks like this at building levels to look at, as I talked about, kit of parts and square footage and how big classrooms are and how many small group instruction spaces and all of these other things. So, I don't know where that happens in the process yet, and I don't profess to that. But I think, I think what we need, let me say it this way. Before I would recommend investing money in a second-party evaluation, I say we get deeper into understanding what OFCC is going to bring us and what timetables and then drive that next piece to the question of what does that mean for us in terms of when we can do things? We can start doing anything we want anytime we want. We don't have to wait for OFCC to do any facilities enhancement project we choose to do. We have the internal capacity to do that to whatever level we want to from a funding perspective and, and a needs perspective. So, it's not a wait for, to be honest, we don't even know if, when OFCC, when our time comes, if, when our time comes, which is now or in the near future, if there will even be any money. So, the whole thing could be for naught, OFCC. I don't think we want to sit here and wait for OFCC money. I think what we want to, I think what we want to get is the best information and extrapolate from everything we can before we spend more money on getting more information. So, we can do both. We can say, OFCC, go do your bit, and then contract with someone to go deeper dive. I wouldn't recommend doing it that way. I think we, when, if Jeff's going to meet with OFCC, maybe we need as a next layer meeting with a board member or two and Jeff and Bart and whoever else we want in the room to pick out some of this thing and get a better handle on what, what's in front of us before we make decisions about other money. But again, and I think, Tracy, I hear you on this one, this, this sense of frustration that we're waiting for OFCC, we don't have to. If we have a facilities commission, a community-based commission, we can examine our current resources that we have and make determinations about things we may or may want to do right away to get things moving. The question is, what are those in terms of priorities and how much do we want to spend and where does that come from, right? Those are some of the bigger questions. Even, even with an OFCC assessment and all the right information, if, if that thing folds on us, we don't have that money. And we don't have the money anyway because for OFCC projects, you have to have, you have to have a community-based support. We're not even there yet. We're so far away from that, that's a distance. To get to the point, what's immediate, that's where I think our own internal facilities commission and talking about what we see as immediate needs and getting better information. But I think they can be better informed from some better assessment data as well about, okay, if that's the assessment data, let's go deeper dive here, here, and here, and here. What could we do now and what are the resources to, to help us along? I think we, I need that, that ingredient. So, to get to the pace that we like to get at and not look like we're kicking the can down more than road to get more information. And the last thing I'd leave you on is, think of this. It's 2017. If a, if a building's lifespan is more than 50 years, what is teaching and learning going to look like in 2067? Right? Going back to the issue of flexibility. That's, that's where your discussion point is going to. I, I don't know, I don't know what it's going to look like in, in 2027. But that's the fleet you're, you're discussing. It's something that is a community value for at least 50 more years. We're running programs now in buildings that are 100 and some odd years old, right? So, that's the vision in front of you about what is that going to look like, teaching and learning? So that's the vision in front of you about, what is that going to look like, teaching and learning? I wrote a piece, or I shared a piece with some of our principals the other day about innovation in education and our inability seemingly to really be innovators. We don't innovate well, and when we do, we have trouble implementing, we have trouble sustaining. And I think there's a lot of functional reasons why. And one of them is facilities design, right? Going back to that, how do we get, how do we support teachers who want to change instruction if we keep sticking them in the same kinds of places to have instruction, or cobble together pieces that, because we have to? So I think, get the assessment. I think, put the facilities group together. I don't think we're handcuffed on time waiting for OFCC. I think all of that can happen rather quickly. But I think what Jeff needs is some data points to get this situation driving that are better than 2001.
Can we then, I'm not summing up anything, I'm just, suggestions here. One, we're moving forward with the assessment. I hope it's more than age, but you, boy, it sounds like it's pretty age-centric.
I really want to know what it's based on. I'm serious. Because anything that we do on a deeper dive with the OFCC, if the assumptions are based on the initial assessment, then the assumptions are going to, the deeper dives are going to be built on the same assumptions. So really, if you would, on Wednesday, see if you can get some better information from them. We know what the free assessment's based on. We know that. What we don't know is where that goes into the later pieces. I'm just, I'm extraordinarily concerned about that.
So we start there, and we find out some additional information about what that is based on. What are the next points of context? And you're going to find out every answer we need this coming Wednesday. Is that correct? And more. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's on the record, right? In addition to that.
Let me, if there's a board member available, Jeff, is there any reason why if a board member wanted to be part of that conversation, they couldn't be there? Any harm in that one?
Well, I would ask if our facilities liaison.
I think I'm getting my toes done. Joking. I'm totally joking.
If you go to the meeting, Mr. Valero, do your toes for free.
Be careful what you say. We're recording this.
Oh, it's okay.
No, no, him, not you.
Okay. No, if you look, they need done, but no, I don't do that.
They're pretty shabby. But, no, they're, no, they're nice. Where are we? I would ask if our facilities liaison couldn't, yes?
No, keep going. Sorry. I will check my calendar.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to check it right now? I mean, I'm feeling a little pressure here.
Next Wednesday, 1/3.
While you're checking that, if you can change your manly and petty, we want to ask, a week and two days?
Yes, 24th.
What?
Oh, my goodness. If she can change, oh, my.
Her manly and petty?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Yes?
Keep going. I'll.
I was going to ask our superintendent to begin to put together a superintendent's committee for facility discussion with the committee, with the community. Perhaps one or two of us on that as well. We'll talk about that.
I'd like to see a timeline on that. I was thinking about this.
Go ahead.
So for the committee to have some sort of a timeline, one of the things I think that might be helpful is if we give them options of things we want to look at. For example, do we want to do a short plan? We know we have a little bit of money. Do we want to look at some of our buildings that are in need and maybe start something now? And then do a long, 10-year plan that involves all kinds of things?
So, we're at that part of the conversation which you can never avoid, which is money.
I know.
And so if we go back to capital improvement dollars and what Jeff has, he has those measured out. Part of what might be helpful for that facilities committee is to take a look initially at how we're spending the dollars we have moving forward. Does that make sense, Jeff? There are projects we have slated for those dollars, and how we allocate those, and what those priorities are. Because without additional dollars, that's what we got.
That's what we have. And we have a plan, but it's fluid. So things change based on a reprioritization of needs. So if we have a failure that we have addressed that's two years out and we need to move it up, this plan, it's always been fluid. But we do have a plan. If that makes sense.
Next meeting, Bart will do the five-year forecast, which gives you an opportunity to look at where your financial projections are based on the assumptions, and whether or not there's any opportunity in the future to, now we're in the general fund dollars, we're out of the capital, whether or not you want to increase allocations that you do annually from the general fund to support more of a capital improvement investment. And the question is, how much of that, and what does that impact on the five-year forecast, before we get to the money side?
Could we look into an independent assessment in the meantime? Because we won't meet again as a board until after, I guess until June 12th, after the OFCC meeting. So, I mean, that's a long time if we're not going to at least look into the possibility of an independent assessment in addition to what the OFCC is going to do.
I think you, what'd you say, Nancy?
Do we want to get some costs, or?
You want to know about what's it cost and what people have done?
Yeah, instead of going, okay, well, let's wait for this meeting, and then we'll have this discussion, we'll have this discussion. Instead, let's get some background info so that we make a more decision.
Yeah. So look at what kind of firms are out there, and what they kind of charge for that, how they do it. Yep, I can do that.
Do you know any of this, Jeff?
Well, yeah. I mean, we've been working for some teams for a long time here that have made my cut. And I know, me as well as teams I've worked with have 16, 17 years of history of these buildings. So we have a good idea. I mean, we can, we can put this together. Even the OSFC, OFCC has a recommendation of hiring a criteria architect to kind of oversee what they're doing as a sanity check. So I would first look at those that we've been working with for years and have been performing well for us. And two, I would say, you know, as I'm listening and I'm hearing how you may prioritize how we go about looking at it, I think these are all important. Age is important. Enrollment is important. What I'm hearing with the needs of special needs and others, I personally think, we look at all of this, and then we prioritize it against a set of budgets. But that's, that's what we do with the capital plan. We're typically working backwards to make numbers work. Ever since I've been here, we've had a number identified for us, and you work backwards to hit that. But that's based on collectively taking all this information and then prioritizing it. So to say strictly on age, I'm not so sure I would rank painting a room above kids that are in a makeshift closet. So I think we have to look at it collectively. And then we will come up with some recommendations for this committee to review.
Okay. Sound good?
But I agree. I think the expertise is here.
I do think it is. And again, we keep saying this, we're very grateful for you all spending this time with us and sharing with us. And we really want to draw out what it is. You are, you are experts in these areas. You are, you are on the ground, on the front lines, choose your metaphor. And if we can get this OFCC assessment, however it is, right, but tap into the expertise and the years of baseline knowledge that you have on our buildings already. You're in and out of them all the time. You're crawling down in the holes. You're seeing what's holding up and what's not holding up. That's just the truth. And that kind of information, I think, let's just pretend there's this committee of 15 community members out there, a couple of us on it. We hardly knew any of this. The community just, just wants to know, what is it that's going on inside the facilities that you're concerned about? Let us share with you this report. What is it you want to do in these facilities? Let us hear from your special ed coordinator. Let us hear from your gifted coordinator. Let us, let us find out, how are you reconfiguring the rooms these days? And just honor the community. And I, listen, I know I'm preaching to this choir. I know you all want to do this. We just want to honor the community with the best information we have, some from OFCC, baseline stuff, sounds like. And then the deeper dive, some of which we already have. And we begin, that is the process toward prioritization.
So what I'm hearing, continue the conversation, OFCC, do the deeper dive, get more information. Tracy will try and make herself available for that meeting. There's probably another seated table for another board member wants to be there. I should identify individuals or a team that would be internal and external community members, internal staff, external staff as well, or internal staff and community members, or would you prefer just community members? With our internal staff, do you want individual teachers, principals, et cetera?
Is that just for the committee, or are you talking about the independent assessment?
I'm just talking about the committee. I had a different question on the internal assessment because I heard two things. One, I heard, go find another agency that other people have used. And then I heard Jeff suggest, I think, Jeff, if I hear you right, it's a combination of you and architect firms that we've worked with before, that we've worked with. And I want to make that clear because there's a difference between us developing the numbers and how that might be in terms of how the community views that, and a third party viewing the community numbers. So what Jeff is suggesting is, we have a relationship with people we've worked with before who have good knowledge and have a relationship with us that we can get quicker and we think very accurate information. If we're comfortable with that, that's different than someone we have no relationship with incoming in and kicking the tires.
Could it be, really, and I'm just wondering, could it be that we start here with information given to this community committee? And then they might say, or perhaps out of them, that's all good information, Jeff, and the people you're working with, awesome? But we'd like to see some independent.
I think, I think we're just creating work then.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking. That would be the measure, or the comparison.
I guess I'm seeing the OFCC as that independent group.
I'm agreeing with you. I'm saying that out of that, I'm saying, let's say that committee of 12 to 15, a couple of us on it, if they come up with, this is all good, but we think we need more information, then maybe we look externally. But I'm not sure we need to do that yet.
I would like to look externally sooner, at least look into what the cost would be. And I think that, you know, a firm that's worked with the district that's familiar with our facilities would be good. But I mean, I don't know what the other board members think.
I agree with Jerry. For a lot of reasons. And I'm not going to restate the stuff I've already said. I think it does make good sense. I think it informs the committee better. I think it informs, helps inform the community, and helps inform all of our decisions. And it removes, even though we're looking at firms that have worked with us, it removes certain layers of biases that we all have, including me, obviously. As regards the committee itself, I'm struggling a little bit with the numbers in my head on how we get the kind of representation we need. Because while we have remarkable expertise here, we do need to engage teacher representatives and administrative representatives, and we certainly need to engage some community representatives. So I'm not quite sure how we do that in 12 to 15 people, so I'm wrestling with what that roster might look like.
Let me work on it a little bit. I have some ideas that would include a standing committee that might call particular in-house people to come in and talk to them a little bit about what they're seeing. So let me work on that one. And timeline to that, to Tracy's piece, I think, sooner than later. Realizing we're headed in, from what I'm told from some of the children in the district, we're headed towards summer. They keep telling me that. I just know there's a day I go to work and there's no buses on the road, and it's an easier drive. I want to clarify, when I was asking about the audit of the facilities, OFCC is an external one. Jeff suggested that with him and people he's worked with, they can do the second piece. And my question was, do you want that way to do the second piece? Or a different firm altogether? I'm driving at community perceptions about where those numbers came from and who might have, how those might have been tabulated, okay? In crude terms, if it's Jeff and a team that has been with the district and is, I'm going to just say it, and that proceeds to have interest in those projects, those numbers might get a different view from community members than numbers from someone that is not involved in that project. If I give you numbers and I have no vested interest in making that I'm going to be involved in those projects, that's different than, I'm giving you numbers that in the end, I may have a vested interest in whether or not I'm involved in that project. I'm just putting it out there.
That's what I meant by biases, but you put it out there a lot less euphemistically.
I just, I don't want to, I don't want to lose it because I don't want to get, I don't want to have it go sideways on that issue. I think, I feel comfortable and confident that under Jeff, he's going to try and get us the best numbers he can regardless who it is. If it's, if it's a group that we've worked with who knows us inside and out, he's going to work them just as hard as he would anybody else. That's what Jeff does. That's why we like his expertise. So there's value to that, right? We have someone on staff who knows what to look for and what to ask. That's what we have Jeff's expertise for. So I feel comfortable in doing that. But it does have that element.
But it's just like our other professionals. I, I trust Jeff. I trust who he, you know, the architect firms he works with. I'm fine with that.
I just wanted to vet the question because.
I've just won the question.
Yeah, you're right, John, because what will be said is, there is a vested interest. You know, when we use certain firms that we pay to do work for us, and the perception could be had. And I'm not saying we don't go that way. I just think we need to understand that if that's the way we go, it is quite understandable that there is a perception in the community that the people that we work with are saying certain things in order to get more work.
But won't we have the comparison from the OFCC? I mean, that, that would be the.
We can go that way. I just want us to understand the ramifications of all. Because in a community this large and this diverse, there will be a number of things thought, said, understood, and misunderstood.
Well, I wouldn't, I, let me see if we can, if I can, if you can package it maybe a little bit. I think OFCC, we kicked them all over the place. We're just, we're just, you know, okay, we're going to use that one, right? That's an assessment. Jeff and outside organizations that we've used certainly know the facilities very well and bring great information, I think. I'm hearing some reticence to stopping there, maybe not, a little more perception. And perception, wanting some more external, could we, it doesn't hurt us to find out who's out there. What would be the cost? What is the process for engaging them? In other words, we're not pulling the trigger on it yet, a third assessment. OFCC, Jeff and the gang, and then the possibility of a third.
Talking about a third assessment, or find out what the cost for someone other? Do we want to do a cost comparison to have the work done?
Just so, just so you're aware, too, the OSFC, OFCC will hire an architectural firm to do that work. It's not their own employees doing that assessment. So they are hiring an independent firm.
Right.
Okay.
So I think that we're to a point, John, you hinted at it. We need, we need proposals to throw darts at, right? I think. I, I think that we're, I think that we can come up with any number of different variations of this. So let's kick it back to the staff, staff expertise. Come back with a proposal. And you've heard our concerns. You've heard what it is that we're interested in. Some of it is independent evaluation. I think that, I think it's important to have some form of an independent voice that, that weighs in. John, I think your concerns are, are well-founded. I think that we cannot put ourselves in a position to have, you know, paralysis by analysis. We've got buildings in the fleet that need attention. So we need to get ourselves together so that we're, you know, working from a plan that is inclusive of the board. I think, you know, everyone around the table here, administrative side, you've done a great job of working from a plan on a tactical, you know, year-by-year basis, right? We need to build a holistic plan. So to do that, we need information. So let's put together proposals. What does a community, uh, facilities committee look like? Community-based, what does a facilities community, uh, committee look like as a integrated hybrid organization of staff, teachers, resources, third parties? And, you know, OFCC and how does it all plug together? Give us something to, give us something to talk about in more concrete terms.
Could we also include some students in that facilities committee?
I think student voice in this is going to be important. Whether or not it's that, as is staff voice, I think where we, when that opportunity comes and how we play that. A 15-person committee, we can put a student or two on there, but that's, and I'm not opposed to that. I think we want to have multiple voices at the table to remind us who else we want to bring in. But I don't think a 15-person person, committee is going to be enough to roll. I think there's going to be a standing committee with other components. But yes, absolutely. Student voice in there. Particularly as we, as we dive deeper into what kinds of projects we end up doing and start actualizing those. If we get to, when we get to that level, then it really becomes important, what student voice is like. What do you want your meet? Well, let's go back to the point for your project. We have Emma's glass roof because Emma, a fourth grader, said, hey, wouldn't it be cool? And now we have a glass roof. We have all kinds of features at that school based on student input. So yes, student voice is going to be critical to this from the front end to the back end. So what I'm hearing is, hey, staff, bring us back some thoughts on how to do, other than, get us some information from OFCC. Bring us a plan for a, a deeper dive, a second audit of our facilities. And bring us a game plan for a facilities commission and how that might work so that we have a, an increased opportunity for voice in what we're doing. And I think I sense as, as soon as possible would be the, the other emphasis. Okay.
I think at board leadership, maybe we need to address this committee pretty quickly so we can get out to the rest of the board what our thoughts are and get their approval on that and thoughts. Because I know you want to bring some ideas about that as well.
My ask of the board of that facilities commission is help me be clear on what is, their objective is. So we're clear to them about what we're bringing them in the room to do. I'm not entirely clear what that is yet because I'm not entirely clear what our assessment needs are yet. Before, you know, as part of that. So yes, I, I agree. But I would like real good understanding of collectively, what is it you want as their scope of work, so to speak, and what they're going to look at? I have some thoughts on what that might be, but yeah, we could do that.
Okay. Board members, so I, I guess I would charge you to send an email. Send a, make a conversation, something with Dr. Kellogg. Here are the five things I would like to see this, and you can do six. Here are the five things I'd like to see this superintendent's committee be about. So don't not do that. Send that in the next couple of days, few days. Okay? Let's do some really good guidance on that. And then we can aggregate that. Maybe at board leadership, make sure we're all on the same page. How about that? Does that sound all right? Awesome. Any other kind of final thoughts on this discussion before we begin to wrap up? Gertie's just hanging with us tough. We appreciate it. She's, she's still in Neverland over there, I know. Any final thoughts from board before I wrap this up? I would say again, thank you to each one of you, sharing your expertise. I say that on behalf of the board. Certainly not just for me. I am, I'm just very grateful, not just for the information that you brought, but the obvious passion and commitment you bring to each of the areas. So thank you. Jeff, I'm speaking to you as well. I know you're not normally at this, up here with us, but this is, this is an important, important area to us. And as you can tell, there's some varying opinions and some discussion and debate, and that's as it should be. I, I am very grateful when the board kind of discusses and debates back and forth. Mark, thank you for joining us up here. I'd appreciate if you would keep your mouth a little quieter next time. Thank you. All right? It's nice to have the muscle up front with us. That's awesome. And Dr. Kellogg, just a ton of work, I know, behind the scenes on all of this. And sometimes excited and sometimes anxious and sometimes, ooh, okay, what are we getting ourselves into and what's the community going to think? And that's all very important. It's very important. So we will, we will bring the community into this discussion as well we should. And to my fellow board members, thank you for just really, just good discussion and hammering it out and trying to figure it out. And this was one of many that I hope we have with the direction that we go. Appreciate the audience. Thank all of you for being here with us tonight. Thank you, cameraman. I, I don't know. I'm just thanking people. Okay, it's time to move on. I would like to move, do, I don't need to motion out of this, do I? Since we suspended Robert?
You just say we're done.
Poor.
Slap it down.
Poor Robert. Okay, agenda item 6.01, the board will meeting regular session Monday, May 22. That's also our retirement recognition. That's just an awesome, that's an awesome time. Also on Monday, January 12.
January?
I'm just making sure you're paying attention, people. Wow, they were. June 12th and, oh, I'm moving on to the next agenda item. Am I Jill? Jill's just moving me on. I'd like to motion to.
You don't even need to. Just say we're adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Done.